Members, good evening. My name is Mike Bradley. I am an attorney in Woodbury. And I have a practice that involves working with cities on telecommunications matters. So that means cable television franchising, telecommunications permitting, and now broadband franchising. I represent cable commissions in cities all across the metro and throughout the United States, actually. And I've had the privilege of working with the Ramsey Washington County Cable Communications Commission for, shoot, over 20 years, 25 years. We have some really exciting news, I think, to share with you all. And you probably saw in your packet, we represent the South Washington County Telecommunications Commission. That's a commission that includes the city of Woodbury and the city of Cottage Grove, St. Paul Park, Newport, Great Cloud Island. The city of Woodbury was approached by numerous broadband companies. And they were wondering, you know, well, what can we do to make sure that all of our residents are being served? We have customer service obligations and the like. And they approached the commission to visit about that. So when we got together with them, we told them that there is an opportunity to franchise these broadband companies. And the city of Woodbury was interested in that. And so they, like the city of Lake Elmo has done, they've delegated that authority to their local commission. And so for Woodbury, it's the South Washington County Commission. For you all, it's the Ramsey Washington Commission. And I go over some of the background and the materials with you, just very briefly, though. For many years, broadband's been kind of in a weird place as far as how do we regulate broadband in cities? And it's kind of vacillated between different classifications. For the first time in 2025, we had a court case decision come out that clearly said that broadband is not a telecommunications service. And when that happened, that required us as city attorneys to go back and look to see, well, where does broadband fall? It's not a telecommunications service. Telecommunication service, we know we can only regulate through permitting. Cable television, cable communication systems, we can regulate through franchising. So when we look back at, okay, well, what is broadband? We looked at the state law. The state law says cable communication systems are systems that provide, among other things, data and other communication services. And we felt like that's where broadband fell. And so we, the city of Woodbury notified all of their providers. They said, you need to get a franchise. They approached the commission. We started the process for franchising. We negotiated the state's first franchise. And I think the reason why it's so exciting, really, for cities and residents is that you really can provide a lot of benefits to your residents through franchising, much like through the cable television franchise that we have with Comcast. So some of those things include requiring buildout of your entire city, making sure that all of your residents have access to the same quality of service throughout the footprint, having a place for people to call with customer service issues. I have clients across the metro that have had a lot of issues with, especially with Lumen. There's no place for somebody to get relief, really, when you have a problem with Lumen. So strong customer service standards, good buildout provisions, and franchise fees, and some additional public benefits, such as building out fiber to government buildings and the like. So when you weigh the benefits of franchising versus permitting, I think it overwhelmingly falls on franchising. Is it a rock-solid argument that all broadband companies have to get a franchise from cities? No, it's not a rock-solid argument. We think it's a very good argument. We think that's bolstered by the fact that the broadband companies are agreeing to get franchises from cities like Woodbury. We also think it's bolstered by the fact that many cities across the metro are now looking at franchising the broadband companies in their areas. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, mayor and council members and commission directors. Yeah, I'll open up for questions.
So would you be installing the infrastructure as the franchise or would the franchise person be installing the systems?
Yeah, it would be the company that the city franchises. So there's a number of new broadband companies that are coming into the area, such as Gateway and Intrepid Fiber. It's a good question.
What would be the expectation of the city in terms of administrative time costs?
Yeah, that's another really good question. So you have already delegated, as a city, you've already delegated your franchising authority to the commission. So the commission would be responsible for doing everything for you. And then it would come back, the franchise would come back, and the city would act on it. So the commission would have all the costs. And just so you know, the way we, at least the way we did it in South Washington County, is we have an application. As part of the application, we make sure that there's an adequate application fee to cover the commission's costs to review and negotiate the franchise.
So suppose someone came in and we gave them a franchise to put broadband throughout the city. How does that interface with what we currently have with Comcast?
It would actually be very similar, council member. Comcast has a franchise to use all of our public rights away to provide services and build its cable system out to residents. A broadband franchise would be very similar. It would give the broadband company the right to build out the entire city.
So as a broadband company's buildout, are they sole providers or do they put the fiber in and then sell capacity in the fiber to people who actually provide services?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And in Woodbury, the first franchise, the first broadband franchisee is the latter, actually. It was, it's a company called an open access system. So it comes in, it builds fiber throughout the city, and then it has a client or clients that it will essentially rent the system out to. And then that provider, like T-Mobile, will provide the services directly to the residents. Yeah.
That's kind of how I interpret the information, but I want to confirm that.
Yeah.
Is that generally the model that would be used if it wasn't a franchise, if they did just a permit, where somebody comes in, it's the wholesale provider?
That's another super question. The answer is no. There's, from what I see, a couple of different models. One is this open access system that Intrepid provides. There's another company called Gateway Fiber, and they come in and they build out your city, and they will also be the service provider.
What about in a case where, so maybe like the third alternative would be there isn't a wholesale developer of the network? Then in that case, would multiple different companies that want to provide it have to lay down their own lines? Would they all have to come in and apply for permitting for that?
Yeah, I'm not really sure exactly what that model looks like.
Okay. And as I think through, I mean, it doesn't seem like it would really work as a model.
Right, yeah, I'm not really seeing that. But I am seeing a system that's being built, like I was talking with the other council member here, about building a system, essentially building a highway and then having multiple cars on the highway. Yeah.
In the past, there was a 5% limit on franchise fees for cable TV people or whatever. Is that limit still in place or are you free to charge whatever you want now?
Yeah, that's kind of a fun question, actually, because when you look at broadband and how broadband is regulated at the federal level, cable television has a cap of 5% on franchise fees. With broadband, there is no federal regulation of broadband. And so there is no, there's technically no cap. Now, what we did in South Washington and Woodbury is we worked with the city, we worked with the commission and the provider to determine what a fair amount would be. We fell on 5%. We wanted to keep it, you know, as similar as possible so that there wasn't any sticker shock to any of the residents.
It does agree to my next question. If you have one with Comcast that provides for 5%, does it say you have to, can't go over 5% for other providers?
The franchises usually do have a, what they call a competitive equity provision in them. Now, that typically relates only to the cable television service and not to the broadband service, so it gets a little sticky there. But it's another reason why we try to keep it similar. Just note, too, that the cable television franchises, the franchise fee is paid on the cable television service, and it's limited to that. The broadband companies would be paying on the broadband service. The companies like Comcast, there's federal regulations in place that prohibit cities from charging franchise fees on the broadband revenue from Comcast.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
When it comes to the buildout, especially in places that exist already but may not have broadband, and then also build out for places that aren't developed whatsoever, how have cities done that in terms of negotiating with the provider? Timeframes, where to go first, how, literally, how quickly? I assume it's a negotiation, because if they can't do it, they can't do it. But I assume the city still has leverage in that regard?
It does. When you say, how is it normally done? We just negotiated the first one, and they haven't started construction because we granted it, we signed it, and then construction season ended immediately, right? So, but it is a negotiation. I can tell you that state law is very favorable. If broadband is a cable communication system, if a broadband system is a cable communication system, like we argue it is, there's really good state law in place that says that a provider has to build out their entire system within five years. And so that's what I fell back on. And so we do have provisions in the franchise that require a five-year buildout.
That'd be an elementary question, but is broadband and fiber optics, are they the same?
Basically, I think it's fair to equate the two as being essentially the same.
Okay.
Can you wire that broadband be fiber optic?
As part of the franchise agreement?
That wasn't, that didn't come up in our conversations, I think mainly because they said in their applications that their system was going to be all fiber optic.
Okay.
So if there's existing broadband systems in neighborhoods in the city now, so does this then become an additional line run? So that, you know, if I've already got cable or fiber to my house, are we going to come in and run a second line throughout everybody's neighborhoods that already, where there already exists? Or does that become a sales negotiating point with the providers to say, do you want to rent what you've got? Or I'm going to do it on my own? So we're going to be putting in all this infrastructure that already exists?
Yeah, what you're talking about is called an overbuild, meaning you're putting wires essentially next to each other, going through neighborhoods. And that's really what you would be talking about. You would be adding another overbuild to your city.
Unless Comcast is willing to rent their, the space on their fiber line that already existed or whatever, Lumen or wherever else.
Yeah, Comcast will not do that, but yes, they don't rent to competitors.
So when it comes to their rights in the right-of-way, and we talk about construction projects that come up, what are their rights as far as having to move? And then, within a city, kind of tied to that, are they also allowed then to use the Washington County right-of-way and the MinDOT right-of-way if you have that in your city?
They will be required to get permission from the state to use state right-of-way. Our franchise will control the city of Lake Elmo public right-of-way. I think you mentioned relocation, is that what you're talking about?
So yeah, let's say you're widening a road, and they're in the ditch, and you're widening, they got to move. Relocation at their cost?
The...
First relocation?
That's a great question. And so what we would do is we would follow the existing city code as it relates to relocations. So assuming that your city right-of-way code addresses relocation in that way, that's exactly how it would go. But, you know, it is something good to review with your city attorney periodically as your right-of-way, your code. The way I'll negotiate a cable tele, or a cable communications franchise, a broadband franchise, will make it so that it works seamlessly with your city code.
So it sounds like with the franchise, if you don't have Comcast now, you're not going to get Comcast with the franchise. You're going to get one of these other two, the Gateway or the other Intrepid or whatever it was.
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. The answer is no. You'll be able to get all of these services. You'll be able to get Comcast. You'll be able to get the new franchisees' services if you want. The old telephone system, you know, probably provides like a DSL type of service. You might still be able to get that. So, you know, you'll have a number of options in your city.
You made it sound like the Comcast would not be, they would not be a part of the franchise.
They won't get a new broadband franchise, but they already have a cable television franchise.
But if they're not in our area, like where I live right now, Comcast is on the other side of the street, and I can't get it on my side.
Oh, oh, that's, yeah, that's a whole nother issue. We take it up with the cable commission.
Well, is that kind of the part of the point of this, right, is for situations like that, making sure that this service is provided so that we don't get these situations where you have it on one side of the street and not the other?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's a big part of it. And I think, I think the confusion too, right, is when they're, with like Intrepid, they're the wholesaler, so they're building out the infrastructure, but then they're renting, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're renting that infrastructure to other providers for their services.
Except Comcast.
So it sounds like Comcast chooses not, because they want to have their own lines, they don't want to negotiate any of the franchise fees. So then Comcast would have to make the decision of, well, do we want to compete against this franchise that was set up in Lake Elmo and go to the other side of the street, or do we just stick with where we're at? That's my take on it, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's generally correct. Yeah, and, you know, getting service to everybody in the city, that's something that the city can work with the commission and the franchisee, which in this instance would be Comcast, in making sure that, you know, everybody's getting served. I think there's been an issue maybe in the past with how far away houses are from the cable system, and there's a buildout requirement there. That's probably at play in getting some of those houses served. But I know Judge Armstrong, does anybody know Judge Armstrong here? So Judge Armstrong has a farm in, I think it's Lake Elmo, I'm pretty sure it is. And this is going back several years ago, but he comes to the commission and says, hey, the system is going right by my farm, you know, we want service. And so then the commission, you know, notified Comcast and said, hey, the system is right here, you know? Splice it, send it up to Judge Armstrong's farm, farms. And ultimately, they agreed to do that. So there are ways of making sure that the operator is abiding by the terms of its franchise with the city of Lake Elmo.
I need to put Judge in front of my name in order to get it from my...
But Mike, this is part of the reason we would do something best to ensure we provide those broadband services to some of the rural, obviously, Lake Elmo has made some rural entities, right? Isn't that part of why we would do that, right, to...
Well, that's exactly right, yeah.
...that we have the ability to connect in to your street.
No, that's exactly right. And that's exactly why you have buildout provisions and making sure that there isn't somebody across the street that's not getting the service. You want everybody to get service throughout your entire footprint, and you want everybody to have the same quality of service.
It's bringing the plumbing to the house, but you got to connect into the plumbing.
Yes.
Well, the other thing is that Comcast still has a lot of copper fiber, I mean, copper and not fiber to houses.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
And, you know, if we had a fiber provider, you could fiber to your house and increase your speeds significantly.
Yes. Yeah, you get, you get this up and down. Sorry?
Maybe it would incentivize Comcast to put fiber.
Well, you know, I think it probably would, right? I think it probably would.
So another, so as a developing city, we have areas that are in the process of having new developments, so how would that work with the agreement? Would that be stubbed in or just they tap into it when a new development comes?
Yeah, I mean, they would. I think all the providers on new developments are, you know, they work with the city and they work with the developers on making sure the facilities get in. So, but it wouldn't, the franchise wouldn't necessarily require them to, but it makes the most financial sense when the development is going in to be putting in your facilities at that time.
But is that a part of the original agreement that's negotiated?
No, not really.
That they would continue to build out?
No, well, the buildout will be, for sure. We don't tell them how to build out specifically. What other questions?
We'll change the topic, because I know there's still some legal discussion about this. And I think from the packet, it sounds like you feel pretty confident that even if broadband does get reclassified as telecommunications, that you think state law, and probably saying this incorrectly, but state law would preempt that, and we still would be okay with this agreement? I guess if we could just speak to that a little bit as far as, you know, what if the legal groundwork changes here a little bit, and all of a sudden it doesn't have this same classification? Do we lose these franchise fees? What happens with the agreement?
Yeah, the fun thing about practicing in this space is that it's fluid. It's always changing. The good news, I think, for us is that with this decision that came out in 2025, that ruled that broadband is not a telecommunications service, the reason why I think it's such a strong opinion now is because another Supreme Court decision had come out that said courts no longer give agencies deference when it comes to interpreting statutes, okay? And so now we have a court decision that came after that decision, that other decision is called Looper Bright. And so now we have a decision that is not really subject to the FCC changing how broadband is defined. So I think we have some regulatory certainty, maybe for the first time, that broadband is not a telecommunications service, it's an other information service. That leads us to the state law. Where does broadband fall under state law? State law is really, there isn't really a, at least in municipal law context, there isn't, there isn't a specific mention of broadband anywhere, literally anywhere in state law. So you're deciding, is it a telecommunications service or is it a cable communication system? Those are essentially our choices right now. Could the law change? Of course, right? I mean, the telecommunications, the broadband companies could go to the legislature and ask for a change. We're prepared for that, by the way. So that could happen. They could take a city to court and get a court to say that broadband is not a cable communication system, it's something else. It's possible, you know? And what does that do? You know, it may terminate our franchises, you know, by law, but it's hard to know exactly what will happen. But that's true, that's true with anything, though, right? I mean, let me give you the example of, in the cable television context. I'm old enough now to remember when broadband wasn't really a thing. And the cable operators started doing high-speed cable internet service, okay? This is in the late 90s, early 2000s. Initially, the cable operators called that a cable service, and they paid franchise fees on it. So there was a couple of years where it was, you know, the cities did quite well on franchise fees. But then in 2002, they changed their mind, you know, just like that. There are no more franchise fees on cable internet services. So that can happen, and it's happened in the past.
But there wouldn't really be any financial downside to the city outside if we then lose that franchise fee, it's not that we'd be on the, I mean, they, Intrepid or a company like that...
Yeah, I, right, yeah, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, there is, you know, if, let's say the city were to be sued, right, along with the cable commission. You know, then there'd be some legal exposure there. We're insured by the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. We would tender the defense to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. There would be some exposure, at least with our deductible there. Again, that's, that's the risk. That's the risk. You get a lot of reward with franchising that we kind of went over, but there is that risk, for sure. What other questions?
You said you had utilities on your list as well. We don't even have utilities in the right-of-way in some of our areas of town. Can you talk to... Can you talk to Excel?
Well, I, I do, I do Excel, I do Excel franchising too, so. Keep us in mind, yes.
I guess, kind of, one more little topic on this. So, I, and again, I know this is an N of one right now with Woodbury, but just going off of other franchised utilities, what is typically the, the downstream effect for the citizens as far as for the cost of the service? How does requiring the build-out across the whole city versus companies, you know, picking and choosing where they wanted to do this? What kind of impacts, if any, have you seen, or, you know, from the, the Comcast, as they're fighting this and they're giving their counter-arguments, you know? What are they saying as far as for the downstream financial costs to the, the consumers?
It, it's hard to know right now with the broadband franchising, but I'll give you another example of, of where the city of North St. Paul decided to build out a fiber system on, of their own. That was met with significant competitive offers by Comcast and CenturyLink. At that time, it was, I don't know, Quest or US West. And they came in and gave really good deals to the residents to not switch over to the city. So I think one of the results is that you get competitive benefits between the providers trying to get customers.
Better leasing from the wholesale infrastructure.
Whatever, however they're doing it. They're, they're competing, they start to compete on price.
Sure.
Right? You know, and so you'll see competition on price, you'll also see competition on service. So the new companies coming in with fiber to the home will have a very, very strong upload and download speeds that, you know, a CenturyLink DSL won't be able to touch. Comcast won't even be able to touch it. Comcast has, you know, really pretty good internet service, you know, generally. But it's nothing really compared to the fiber to the home. Yeah? Does that make sense, hopefully?
It does. I think it's a little baby off of what I was looking for. You know, again, sometimes I can see these types of things, they kind of end up being a tax, in, in a sense, right? In the sense of, you know, if we ask a, a company to make something above and beyond what the, you know, their market analysis says they should do, well, then what's, what's their response to that? All right, I'm going to charge more to make up for these costs. Now, I don't know if that pertains to this situation, because I do know there's a lot of grant money, so, I mean, maybe their financials work out when they're, they're doing this, where that's not the result of it. That's just, that is a really common complaint that will, that I'll hear as well, if, you know, whenever we do talk about franchise fees, is, well, that's just a tax, it's a hidden tax, you know?
Yes.
And again, I, I, the counter-argument there is, you know, if we say, hey, you know, where is this being directed to as far as funds? It's not the slush fund that, you know, it, it talks about in the, the reading here, but it is a tax.
No, it's, it's not a tax, but I hear, I hear what you're saying. It's, it's, it is perceived to be a tax.
Yes, yeah.
Right? It's perceived to be a tax.
It's increasing costs.
And, and that is legitimate, and that's a policy decision that, you know, you and your man, city management will, you know, work with the commission about what, you know, what is your tolerance level there? Because you're right, when you charge a franchise fee, it'll be perceived as a tax. And if you charge a franchise fee, it will be added on to a consumer's bill. There's just no question about that. That's, but that's part of the reason why we kept the franchise fee, at least in, in the Woodbury area. We kept it to, to be essentially the same as what the cable operator pays, which is 5%.
So the other communities in the, in the South Washington adopted this franchise as well, Cottage Grove, Newport? They're all part of that?
The, the answer to that question, Mayor, is no. That, this franchise was granted by the South Washington County Telecommunications Commission. Their commission's a little bit different than the Ramsey-Washington Commission. In Ramsey, Washington, the member cities approve the franchises. In South Washington, South Washington County, the Telecommunications Commission passes the franchise, so it's just a little bit different there. But the service area in the franchise is limited to the city of Woodbury in that instance.
So everybody in Woodbury is on this new franchise system. Everybody has an opportunity to get broadband from?
Well, we'll know in five years.
Oh, okay, it's just starting.
We'll know in five years, but yes, the, the, it's granted for the entire city of Woodbury. Yeah, yeah. Just, and, and members, Mayor, just to kind of wrap things up, there really isn't any specific action that the council has to take. I think if you want to give city management guidance on where you want to move, where you want to go moving forward with franchising, I think you give that guidance to your city management to say, yes, we think this is a cable communication system. Yes, work with the, with the commission, will of course work with your city attorney to make sure that everybody's on the same page, you know, moving forward. But I think just to kind of wrap things up, if you're looking for some, you know, action or guidance, that's what you would want to do tonight, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I'd just like to add, I'm the city attorney, and I just wanted to add some additional guidance that you should be aware of. I don't practice in this area, my colleague Bob Fose does. And I did ask him what he thought of it, and he has some serious concerns about this, given that there's no statutory basis for a franchise for broadband. And obviously, you know, the city could get sued, it's covered by the league, I don't know if we want to be the test case for this, maybe Woodbury will be. And then the other thing is, okay, what if we tell people, we have this franchise, you have to do it? There's no recourse for the city if the company refuses to obtain the franchise, so they could just say, no, we're not going to do it. And then at that point, what do we do? You know, we could refuse the right-of-way permit, but we really don't have any statutory basis to do that, because we didn't have any statutory basis to make them, acquire a franchise. We could bring a lawsuit to compel them to obtain the franchise, but once again, you know, we have no statutory authority. So we don't have a lot of recourse, so we might go ahead with all of this, and then somebody might just ignore us and say, we're not going to do it, and you don't have the authority to, to tell us to do it. And I guess that's kind of one of the other additional risks to the city that I just wanted to bring out. You know, and it's also, I mean, it's a claim on our insurance. I mean, we don't pay the full bill, but we do, you know, our, our premiums will go up, and, you know, it's not just free representation to be the test case.
Sarah, what if we approached as a cost recovery? We can prove there's a cost of accommodating utilities in the right-of-way, and we can quantify what that cost is. And so it's not a franchise fee, it's not a right-of-way permit, it's recovering the cost of allowing to be in our right-of-way.
In terms of, that's our authority to require the franchise?
Well, I mean, let's just say. A broadband company wants to put, you know, fiber in our right-of-way because it's cheaper than negotiating with every landowner. We can say, we, we would allow you to do that, but there's a cost to us for allowing you to be in the right-of-way, and we want to recover that cost. Not a franchise fee, not a tax, we're recovering a cost we can legitimately prove we will incur because that utility's in the right-of-way.
I mean, I guess that's possible, it's a, a different way about it, or maybe Mike can speak to that, if I'm not the expert in this area.
Well, you, you can, you can recover that cost through permitting, to be honest, but then.
It's an annual cost.
Correct, yeah, and, and you can recover that, depending on what your city code says. But you don't get any of the benefits of franchising.
Right.
And I think that's where the, the rubber hits the road. I think you're, you're looking at franchising because of all these other benefits that, that come about. And the franchise fee isn't designed to be cost recovery, it's designed to be rental for the public right-of-way. And, you know, it benefits the city in that it helps the general fund, and it helps community media through the, through Ramsey-Washington Commission. So there are a lot of benefits, and I'm sorry that we're, I've taken way too much time, so I apologize, Mayor, but you know, there is a statutory basis for this. There's a reason why a broadband company has agreed to get a franchise, you know, in the city of Woodbury. They wouldn't just do it otherwise. I've always said, you know, you know, either I'm on to something or I'm on something, and.
What's the statutory basis?
Uh, 238.02 subdivision 3 and subdivision 31. The definition of a cable communication system.
I think you'd be surprised how, how much those costs actually are. Back in 2008, I was an expert witness for the city of Des Moines in a $70 million lawsuit involving franchise fees.
Yes.
And at that time, the cost of accommodating utilities in the right-of-way was 17, excuse me, $17 million a year for all the utilities. We did the follow-up study for St. Paul, and it was $11 million a year. And so it's more than most people think. You know, that was, those were 10, 15 years ago.
Yeah, Mayor and council members, you're so lucky to have him on your council, because he has such a wealth of experience in this particular area. I mean, you're absolutely right, and it is worth looking at how you're recovering from all the providers, because with franchising, you, you know, depending on what your franchise says, of course, but with your franchise, you can recover all those right-of-way costs and receive the franchise fee in addition to that.
In the absence of authority for a franchise fee, you could turn to cost recovery?
Yes, yeah.
That was just my point.
Yep.
All right, thank you, duly noted. We'll move into our commissioner-council training with Ms. Solah.
Thanks for having me.
Really nice to meet you.
Yeah. Before Sarah starts, can I ask Mayor and Council, is there any more information on this topic that you would like? Or should we bring it back again, or do you have any direction to give me to to continue talking to the Cable Commission about this, or to stop, or anything?
I think gathering information's fine, and in, in my opinion, it is. I think you're going to do some more due diligence on it. Make sure there's a, a, a little more firm understanding of some of the legal liability, or, you know, what, what could happen, what the risks involved are before you, you go head-sail into it.
I, I think it'd be interesting to know, if we find some place where they've done this, how has that affected the provision of services? So for instance, you know, we're here, we're pretty much Comcast, and if we had another provider, another fighter came in, I don't know, the city of XYZ did that, and what was the impact to their residents as a result of that competition? Did they get better service? Did they get lower prices? You know, I mean, that makes an informed decision, because right now, we're, you're pretty much, you got Comcast, or you can go satellite, I guess. But those are your two choices, and fiber to the home would be the, you know, the ultimate.
Right. There is Quantum Fiber, I just checked my address through Quantum, and I could get it, at least they say I can.
Loon runs across the street from me. CenturyLink does.
That's all I know, is CenturyLink.
Is it fiber?
No.
Mine is.
It says 20, it says 20, you get 20 speed or whatever, you get 2. It's really slow, and it's unpredictable.
Yeah, Quantum Fiber would be one of those companies, it's a broadband company that would need to get a franchise.
That'd just be a good piece of information to have. There's no point going down the path if you can't quantify that. There's this benefit to your residents from the competition. And, you know, there's people who have done it, so.
Yeah, correct.
I'm on board, just from the opposite perspective, because I hope it goes that direction. But just to give that information that says, no, the price doesn't go the opposite way, because they're having to provide additional infrastructure than what would have been originally planned for.
Well, there's two things, there's a price and, and the service. You know, maybe you'd be willing to pay more if you doubled your internet speed, or tripled your internet speed, so you could download things faster. I mean, everyone has their own way of putting a value on things, but it would be interesting to know what those options were.
What happens to the cost?
Yeah.
To the consumer as a result of multiple providers, you know? Typically, in capitalist systems, that's a good thing, but if we're forcing a build-out larger than what the companies would have otherwise done, I don't know if that's the case.
And maybe we have to quantify the cost, we can say the cost for a megabyte of speed or something, you know? I mean, again, some people would be willing to pay more if you've got, you know, a copper telephone line. You might go and pay more if you have fiber optics that could, you know, can increase your speed by a factor of 20.
For sure, I'll pay for it.
And I think Mike might know some of those places.
I'd like to see some electricity with that.
I see it from a backward planning standpoint. If the intended outcome is more access, then you determine what is the best path, and if it is franchising, if that's the only way to expand access, then we look to see what it is, but if there are other alternatives that don't involve that, fine. But I find it unacceptable that we have any properties in the city that don't have access to broadband. Correct. I, I find that unacceptable. It's the year 2025, grants exist to the state, we have a commission, it's just the process of how do we get there? So I, I, whatever that process is, I don't care. To me, the first priority is access for everyone.
The, the part that's bitter about that is if you go in rural parts of Minnesota, where the state has provided grants, you got a cabin on a 40-acre parcel of land in the middle of nowhere that got fiber up to the cabin because the state has provided grant funding to do that in, in greater Minnesota. All right, I talked enough, I'm sorry.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
But we're lucky to have you.
Yeah. I've, I've been, worked with Mike in the past on these issues. Expert witness.
So you know each other.
Well, the Iowa, Des Moines one went all the way to the Iowa Supreme Court. And my testimony was upheld, so I memorialize an Iowa Supreme Court decision on the cost of county utilities in the right-of-way.
Did Nick tell the truth?
It's, it's not always tell the truth to us, whether the opposition can prove you didn't.
We'll go with it.
They, they had me on the witness stand for 12 hours. There's a piece of cake, I know what it's talking about. I pretended I wasn't angry anymore.
I guess broadband is getting back at us, because we can't get the internet up. They must have heard about our franchise deal. But anyway, I'm going to give the presentation, I'm Sarah Solah, City Attorney. You had in your packet a PowerPoint presentation. Some of you might have it with you, either on your device, which would be on, be on the city's website under the Agenda Center. You can pull it up that way, or if maybe you printed it out, I don't know. I don't think the city printed it out, so if you don't have it on your device, just kind of try to follow along here, but basically, I'm just going to give a, it's a city council commissioner training, and it's on a number of events, a number of issues. I'm the city attorney for the city of Lake Elmo, and I've been the city attorney for 10 years. And when I started in 2016, the city was a very different place, and come a long way since then. And that's kind of one, one of the reasons I'm doing this training, is to keep things going well in Lake Elmo. And we don't want to have any of these issues that we encountered in 2016. So most of these issues aren't things that we encountered in 2016, but I just wanted to, to point out the reason for the training. Now I'm on slide two, for those of you that are following along. We're going to cover a number of topics in this presentation, one being the open mean law, and then data practices, and then the GIF law, conflicts of interest, meeting procedures, social media, city code requirements, evaluating applications, ordinance enforcement, and tips for effective participation. So, and then we'll have a question and answer period at the end, but feel free to ask questions as we go along the way. And I think most of these, I think this is Parks and Planning Commission and the council, so I think all of these things do apply to all of you. So make sure you're paying attention to all the different topics. So make sure you're paying attention to all the different topics. The introduction is that there is a role of commissions in city government. You're appointed by the, by the city council and your job is to advise and recommend direction to the city council. So they're looking at you to provide them with direction and give guidance to city staff and commissions and task forces on various issues. And then also assist in studying city policy. So you might want, you know, there's things you might want to work on in terms of an ordinance or whatnot, reviewing that and giving recommendations to the council. And then also serving as ambassadors to the city. So you are an ambassador to the city. Say, I'm on the planning commission, I'm on the parks commission. You know, that's important and you represent the city and that's important to keep that in mind when you're out there on social media and whatnot. The first topic we're going to cover is the open meeting law. And this basically applies to all of you and it basically says that all meetings of a, of a body, so it'd be the planning commission, parks commission, city council, have to be open to the public. And there are certain provisions in the open mean law where you can close a meeting. They're very nuanced, like for the sale or purchase of real estate or to determine the price. Another one would be certain personnel issues. Probably not a lot that the commissions will encounter that they need to close the meeting, more so for the council. And so the meetings have to be open to the public and you have to notice the meeting three days ahead of time. So we can't just say tomorrow we're going to have a meeting. We have to actually have three days' notice. And the way we do that is we count that on our fingers, so it's basically the day you post the notice and then one, two, three in between and then the day that you have the meeting. So that's, that's how the open mean law notices is supposed to be determined. And then the meeting should be held in city limits. Usually it's held here at City Hall and it should be in an accessible room. And, did you get it up? Okay. I'm just going to switch computers. And then the public must have access to the agenda materials, which I think they do in the back here, it's always in the back table. And one, one thing I will note, there is a new change to the law that talks about allowing you, before you couldn't attend a meeting remotely, you could do that during COVID. We have certain pandemic exceptions to the open mean law that allowed people to conduct means remotely. But now they actually added an exception to the open mean law that allows you to. Is it up? Yep.
Scroll up.
Scroll up. Got it. Yep, thank you. So this is probably a little more interesting. So basically, it used to be that if you wanted to attend the meeting remotely, you could and, but you had to have your camera on and the public needed to be able to see and hear you and the other members of the board or commission needed to see and hear you. And then you had to be able to see and hear them, which usually wasn't an issue, especially now with technology today. But then the issue came up that you had to give notice to the public of where you were going to be and then also make that location accessible to the public. So if you were on vacation in Orlando, you had to say, I'm at the Hilton in Orlando and here's my, I'll be in the lobby there. Come to my meeting. And most people just didn't feel comfortable giving that information and just said, I'd just rather not participate in the meeting. It's not worth it. So the legislature did away with that location requirement, so that makes it a lot easier now to participate remotely because you can just say, I'm not going to be there and as long as you have, you know, Zoom or Teams working and you have your camera on and the public can see and hear you and the board, board of the council can see or hear you, you can participate in the meeting. So that, that's a big change and it's very nice to allow that and you count towards the quorum and everything. So that, that's a change to the law that just happened this past year. So you don't have to give your location, which is good. There are some other additional exceptions for remote attendance, but they don't really apply at this point with that one being the main, the main exception. So as I said, the open mean law applies to the city council and all city commissions. And I think it's important to talk about what a meeting is because I know, you know, this is obviously a meeting. It's a formal meeting. We noticed it and you all came and, you know. But there are meetings where you don't even know you're in a meeting and that would be a gathering of a quorum of your commission or the council where you meet up somewhere and you're all talking about city business is usually, that, that's the kicker is if you're talking about city business, then you could be having a meeting and that's if you received, decide or discuss information on issues related to city business. So you can all get together at a party and talk about, you know, what kind of drink you're having or the food or whatnot. That's fine. That's not city business. But once you start talking about, oh, did you watch the planning commission meeting? What did you think, you know, did you, what were your thoughts on that? What are you going to do when it comes before us? Then that is city business and you are, you know, basically discussing information and you're creating a meeting. But that's only if there's a quorum of you. So if you're just talking with one other person, that's not a quorum. So if it's a five member body, you need three people to be talking at the same time. And it's not necessary that there be any action, so you can just be chatting about it and you're not doing anything, taking any formal action, making motions, whatnot, for it to be considered a meeting. And like I said, it's not chance or social gatherings, so if you all happen to meet up at a restaurant or a bar and start talking, as long as you're not talking about city business, that's okay, even if there's three of you there. And then also same with seminars and conferences, if you just all happen to be at the same, like the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, listening to information, then, you know, that's also not city business. It's city, general city business, but it's not Lake Elmo business. So that gets into serial meetings, which get kind of interesting. And that's when you start talking, usually it can be on social media or it can be on, by text or by email. So that's less than a quorum, it's like if you and one other member are talking about something, city business. And then you bring in another, then you talk to another member that's outside of that conversation and talk about the same thing and then you go back to the first person and say, well, I talked to so and so and this is what they told me. Then, then you're having a serial meeting, even though all three of you aren't talking together, but by kind of having this chain conversation, it's, it's a serial meeting because you're kind of trying to avoid the mean law by saying, well, only two of us are talking about it. Well, actually, three of you are because one of you is going off and asking the opinion of a third person and then bringing that back to the second person too, so that they know what's going on in terms of the, the issue. So that, that can be caught up a lot in like text messages, social media and then also by email. If you can kind of follow the chain, you can kind of figure out who, who is talking to who and that can be a serious issue. And, you know, basically it comes down to what the, you know, the purpose of the meeting was. You know, was it about city business or was it something else, like we're just going to lunch? You know, that, that's okay. And then, you know, what was the intent of the officials participating in the meeting? Were they trying to circumvent the open mean law by going around and polling people about their opinions on a particular matter so that they would kind of know ahead of time what was going on before they had the meeting? Or was it just that, you know, they, they had no intent of, of doing that? So that can play into whether it's a serial meeting, but a serial meeting is a violation of the open mean law. The next slide is the, is basically kind of what I already talked about, that email and social media communications can violate the open mean law when a quorum's involved in the topic of city business. So this can also happen on social media. If somebody posts something on Facebook about how they don't like a particular project in the city and then you chime in and say, you know, I don't like it because of this. And then one of your cohorts on the board chimes in and says, well, I don't like it because of that. And then, then there's three of you on there and you're going back and forth with the residents about, you know, what, what the pros and cons are about the project, then, you know, you're, you're creating a, a meeting right there. So it's important not to be engaging in social media conversations about that kind of stuff. Also, state statute allows the use of social media for exchanges with the public. So you, you can talk to people on social media. It's just that you have to be careful if there's others in the, I guess you could say, the room that are on your board or commission or council. You don't want to, you know, have a quorum issue where they're all, all three of you are talking and responding and basically having a meeting right there on Facebook or Instagram. And then also with email, it's important to not reply all. So if the city administrator sends you an email about, you know, all this application got postponed to the next month and then somebody writes back, good, I'm glad. I hated that application. I didn't want to talk about it, you know? And you hit reply all, that's going to everybody. So now all the members of the commission or the council know that, you know, you're upset about this application and you're happy that it got pulled and, you know, that can, that could be a meeting issue too. So you don't want to hit reply all. And I think a lot of times communications from the city will say, do not reply all. I know I do that when I send out communications to the city council, I'll say, do not reply all because I don't want them just doing that and then all of a sudden they, they've created a, a meeting. And just like email, the text, texting can be a problem, similar to email where you're texting one person and then texting another and it kind of collects into a, into a serial meeting. And then the best practice is to use city staff. So if you have a question, just go to city staff with it and try to get it answered that way instead of trying to figure out amongst yourselves. And city staff can direct you to the, the answer to that question. So that, that's usually the best way to do it. And then they'll know too if somebody else has asked the same question and that they can just get back to everybody and say, you know, I've gotten a lot of questions on this. Here's the answer. And then, you know, that can be the end of that conversation. So best practices for open mean law, unless you're at a meeting, just basically avoid discussions with other council members and commissioners on city matters outside of a public meeting, so not at social events, you know, not, not on texting, not on social media and not by email. I would just, you know, keep it with, you know, when you're at the meeting, talking about city business. Especially too, we have issues where sometimes after, there's always this little after meeting where the meeting's over, it's been adjourned, the public leaves and then everybody sits around and talks about the meeting and how it went. And, you know, that, that can be an issue too. If there's a quorum of you there and you're saying, oh, we should have done this and we should have done that, you know? That, that also can be a meeting, you know, you, you noticed it, you had everybody there, everybody thought it was over and they left and now you're still having a meeting. So it's careful just to, to get out of there when the time is done and not sit around and talk to people about the meeting. And then basically if you have questions about this, it's always good to reach out to city staff or myself and just say, here's, here's, you know, I'm having a graduation party. I want to invite, you know, two other council members. Is that okay? You know, and we'll say, yes, it is, but make sure you're not talking about city business and it's, you know, it's a social event. We don't need to notice it. I think we had one come up not that long ago with the, that was the, it was like a social event somewhere. Was it the lakeside or, yeah. So we talked it through to determine whether or not it needed to be noticed as a meeting. Because I mean, that's the default. You can, we can just notice it as a meeting and if you, I'll go and don't talk about city business, that's just fine. And then, you know, we're covered. So that's kind of the, the default way to handle it. But obviously we don't want to do that for like a private, private event. There are some penalties for violating the open mean law. One of them is personal liability. It's a three hundred dollar fine for intentional violations. And the League of Minnesota Cities, the city does have insurance through them, but the, they can't pay that and the city can't pay that for you. So you, that'll come out of your own pocket. So that's important to note. It's not a whole lot of money, but it's still not, you know, for something that you're doing where you're not getting paid. It's still, you know, a significant amount. If there's more than three or more separate actions, then you forfeit office. That, you know, that has to be actually separate violations of the open mean law. And then the court may award reasonable cost disbursements in attorney's fees up to thirteen thousand for violations. That may come out of the league's pocket or the city's pocket. I don't think it's anything you'd be personally liable for, but the city would have to pay that. And then, and like I said before, you know, the city does pay a premium and its premium would go up for insurance because of that. And then the city can go to the data practices office and get a, an opinion on open mean law issues and also data practices issues. And that doesn't cost anything, which is very nice and it's good protection for the city. Because if we just really don't know the answer, it's better just to ask. And then we have that protection going forward. If they say, yes, you know, it, it would be a violation, then we say, okay, you know, thank you. I'm glad we know that. We won't do it. But then if we go ahead and do it anyway, even though they said that we should have not done that, then there would be mandatory attorney fees if we did not comply with that data practice, that opinion from the data practices office. So that's important to note too. And that puts us right into data practices. And data practices, that applies to all, all government data. So if you're talking about your, about city business on your phone and the communication concerning the city business is government data, even though it's on your private phone. It doesn't matter where you put it. Because I have people say, well, that's on my personal computer or that's on my phone. It doesn't matter and it's not a city phone or it's not a city computer. It doesn't matter. It's the data. Is it about the city? Is it city business? Then it's government data. So in, same with personal email accounts. Those are also, anything in there would be government data. That's city business. And so you can't just hide it by sticking it in a certain account. It doesn't mean that the, so that means that if there's a data request that comes in, we have to get that data. If you have a city email account, which I know some of you do, that's easy because the city can just automatically pull that data right from your account and we don't have to ask you to search it. I know some of you don't have city email accounts and that can, you know, then we're going to have to have you search it or worst case scenario, we get involved in litigation and we have to have somebody else search it. And, you know, that, that can get kind of time consuming for you and, and the city. So best practice in that case would be to have a separate folder in your email account where you're saving the city emails so that if somebody says, I want all of so and so's emails, you can say, here they are. They're all in this folder. And don't self-edit the emails. So don't sit there and go through them yourself and say, well, this email's not responsive to the request or, or, oh, I'm going to take out this person's name or I don't like, this is embarrassing that I said that, so I'm going to redact that. Leave that all up to the city. So just hand over the emails and the city will go through them and we'll, we'll determine what needs to be produced. And if it's responsive to the request, we'll, we'll produce it. If we need to redact things, we will. But that, you know, that's something for the city to decide and not, and not you, which I know can be hard.
So Sarah, what is city data? So if I send an email to Councilor Holtz and say, you want to go grab a beer at the Twin Points, is that city data?
I would say that's transitory city data. So it's, it's like, it, under the, because the city also has a records retention schedule. So you have, the city has to hang on to data for a certain amount of time. And I don't think we have a email retention policy right now, do we? Yeah. So some cities have email retention policies where they say all emails that are ninety days old get wiped out. Because that way if a data request comes in, then we can say, you know, because I actually had this in another city. She wants all, it's a former council member and she wants all data about her going back to twenty twenty, actually even beyond that, I guess. And it's like, the city probably has all that and they don't have a data, you know, they don't have an email retention policy. So, you know, we're going to have to produce all that, that data, which is a lot. So it'd be nice to be able to say to her, we only retain emails for ninety days and here's your ninety days of emails. And, you know, and then with that, there's certain emails that you wouldn't even, under the retention policy, you wouldn't even need to retain and that would be like the lunch emails. Those could get thrown out right away, but I think they are city data.
But you think that would be city data?
Yeah.
Interesting.
You could try texting instead.
Yeah.
But that'd be city data too. Doesn't matter what form you use.
What if it's to go to the dog park?
Yeah.
City data.
So I, since you're pausing right now.
Yep.
We had talked about this a little bit with the council and was going to investigate to find out how much it is for email only users, if we can, you know, if you want to consider commissioners having city email. And right now it is four hundred dollars a year per user and our Metro Inet is investigating, starting in twenty seven, a cheaper alternative. So there is a price to it, so.
And I should just go over the classifications of, of data. So under the Data Practices Act, there's data that's always public and then there's data that's private, non-public, like personnel data, like, you know, basically. There's like, for, like for personnel data, like the employee's name is public and how much they make is public. But then, you know, you get into disciplinary action, you know, those types of things. Those are, are private. And then there's confidential protected non-public data and that's data. So private data is some data that some people can have. Public data is data that everybody can have. And then confidential, non-public data is data that nobody can. And then confidential non-public data is data that nobody can have. And I guess the example that I always use for that is that if you complain about your neighbor's property because their yard is a mess and the neighbor wants to know who complained about their property, the city can't release that information to the neighbor. They can say, we got a complaint, it's about this, but they can't say who made the complaint under any circumstances. So that's an example of confidential protected non-public data. So, I mean, you may come across some of that because some of you may have access to it for certain reasons. And it's important to make sure that you are aware of that so you're not sharing it with people that shouldn't have it. And then on you, there's, there's certain data that is public. And that would be your name and home address and then a phone number or email address. So it's whatever you prefer to be contacted by, you know, if you'd prefer to be contacted by email, that's fine. And then you don't have your phone number on there. Or if you want to have both, that's fine. Or if you just want to have the, the email, that's fine too. But it has to be one or the other, it can't be, I don't want to be contacted. And then also your first and last states of service on the, on the body. And I know the city probably doesn't necessarily collect all this information, but we'll have to provide it if there is a data request. And then I don't know if any of you have ever received a data request, but in the event that you have, it's important to turn that over to the city, notify either the city administrator or the city clerk of the data request because the city is obligated to respond to that data request, even if it came into you. Sometimes people just don't know who to direct things to. So it's best that you hand it over to the city administrator or the city clerk, say, I got this data request and they will work on responding to it. You, you don't have to do that. And it's best that you don't do that because you might miss something and then get the city in trouble with that. So the city will decide, you know, what, what they're requesting, if it's public and then what information that it has that's responsive to that. And, you know, at that point, they might, if it does involve you, then they might, you know, that's when they might ask for emails or whatever that you might have on the subject matter. So the next topic is the gift law. And there's a statute on this and basically you're a local official under the, under the gift law. And since you are a local official, you can only receive gifts of $5 or less in value. So that's not a lot of money. And that's why when you go to the league conference, you don't see a lot of fancy items at the little exhibit hall because they, they can only give out things that cost $5 or less. And it has to be something that are not, something from not an interested person. So basically if, you know, a developer comes to you and says, would you like to go to the Vikings game, I have tickets, you know, and they're doing development in the city, then they're considered to be an interested person. And it's a gift that has value because the tickets are expensive and you can't accept that gift because you're a local official and they're an interested person. So that would violate the gift law. So that's basically the gift law, it's pretty straightforward. The city may accept donations, I know this happened with the, with the anniversary. We've received some donations from certain businesses and whatnot and the city can do that. The council needs to accept those donations by resolution and that takes a four-fifths vote. So there is a process for that. So, I mean, I had a council member in another city going around saying that they were going to be building a park and she was collecting donations and the city wasn't building a park? So don't do that. So, you know, it's important that we go through the formal process with donations and that they get actually given to the city and the city accepts them and the council accepts them by resolution. And, and the council can most certainly do that. We don't want to spend a lot of time or money or resources, you know, soliciting donations. So I think at one point we had the council members doing that and not city staff. So, you know, there are some exceptions to the gift law and basically insignificant monetary value, so something less than $5. And then plaques or mementos recognizing work, you know, if you get a plaque saying, thank you for your service on the planning commission from some business, that's fine. And then all the little trinkets that you get at the league conference are fine, even though they're from businesses that may want the city's business, like engineering firms and law firms. And then the next statute is the conflicts of interest. There's, there's a statute on that and there's also a city code provision. And this applies to the council and commission members. And this basically talks about do not participate in matters where you have a personal financial interest. And if you think you might have a personal financial interest or a conflict of interest, it's really important, because I get this all the time, I got it last night, where you notify us ahead of time with your potential conflict so we can sort it out ahead of the meeting. Because it's really hard to do these analysis at the meeting when we don't have all the facts. And these things are very fact specific. So for example, if you're a realtor and the city's considering buying property from one of your clients, we'd want to know, are you going to receive a commission for that sale or not? And then is the brokerage, is your brokerage, your employer going to receive compensation? And then if you are, if they are, then are you going to get a part of that too? So those are the kind of things we're going to ask and we don't really want to be doing that at a public meeting. And then it's just a very fact specific analysis, analysis that needs to happen. And that's why we ask that you just contact us ahead of time, even if you're just wondering. And then, you know, there are certain things that aren't conflicts and that's kind of what bothers me too is people will try to, there's like a difficult vote on something and they don't want to vote on it. And they will say, well, I have a conflict. It's like, well, what's your conflict? And then they're like, well, that, you know, that's not, you know, that's my church and, you know, my church is getting a CUP and I, I'm a member of that church. And it's like, well, yeah, but you don't have a financial interest in the church, you're just a member of the church, you couldn't vote on it. Well, I, you know, I don't want to be mean to the church, I don't want to vote against it and I just, you know. So that, that's a, you know, not a conflict. And you should be voting then. And, you know, that, that's when you want to kind of bring things to us ahead of time so that we can figure it out before the meeting, so we're not having these conversations at the meeting. And, and the same goes for like a neighbor situation. If you have a neighbor coming in and asking for something, you don't want to say, well, I have a conflict because you just don't want to tick off the neighbor. It's, you know, it really is, most of the time it's a, it's a personal financial interest. Although there can be a public perception issue too. If you're just way too involved in something and it's going to look really bad if you do vote on it, even though you don't technically have a, a conflict, then, you know, we might decide it's better just for a public perspective issue to not have you, have you vote on it. So anyway, it takes a lot of analysis and it's something we should know about ahead of time if possible. So I had this come up last night in a meeting where, right at the meeting, the council member, there was a contract for a tourism bureau. And she said, well, I, I think I have a conflict. And we're like, well, what would that be? And then she said, well, I'm on the board of the tourism bureau. And then, you know, then we're asking her, well, do you get compensated for that? Well, no. Well, then that's fine, you know, but why didn't you ask us that ahead of time? So, and then also you do need to disclose your, your conflicts. You can't just not vote and not tell people why. The, the next one is meeting procedures. And the city uses Robert's Rules of Order. And there's also some rules of order, I don't know if they're order or what they are, in the city code that we put in place in 2016 that kind of go on like curfew, which is how long a meeting can go on and how many times a member of the body can speak on a certain subject. And these were needed when the city council meetings were going really long, like till 3:00 in the morning. And they're not really necessary anymore, but we, we have them if they're needed. They haven't really been needed in quite some time. So the typical meeting process is, at least for city council, is that, you know, first do the roll call and make sure everybody's there and we have a quorum. And then, you know, reviewing and approving the agenda, approving the minutes and then going into the regular business and any public hearings that go along with that. And then any other business announcements from council members, staff members. And then the future agenda items, upcoming meetings and then adjournment. So it's pretty straightforward and, you know, it's good to have a, an outline for the meeting. And then now we're into social media. And the city, the city has a presence on social media. It, it does allow comments to be posted, I checked today to see if that was true. And the city does have a social media policy for its social media pages. And that's important because people can post all kinds of bad things on social media and there are some times where the city is going to have to take them down. Like if they're very vulgar or very sexually explicit, they need to come down. And we need to be able to have a basis to say, you know, not that, oh, we didn't like you, we don't like you, we're taking it down. It's, it's a violation of our policy, that's why we're taking it down. So that's why the city has a social media policy, then they can take it down without somebody claiming or violating their First Amendment rights. And the city does have a communications coordinator and that's Kathy Smith. And she manages the city's social media pages. And there are a number of social media pages, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, YouTube and Nextdoor. And I think the city mainly uses them for announcements and connecting with, with residents. And then of course there's the city, the city website. And as far as what the city goes, obviously we want to make sure we comply with laws and that's where we don't want to get people posting stuff on social media that violates open mean law or we wouldn't want you to post private data that would violate the Data Practices Act. And then basically everybody being polite on social media, which I don't know, isn't happening elsewhere, but should happen here. And then the city is, you know, monitoring and controlling these, what, these, these social media pages. So keep that in mind. And, you know, they are subject to review and deletion with, in accordance with the city's social media policy. And then, you know, if there's something you think should be posted on there, like a big announcement, it might be best just to contact city staff, Kathy Smith, about, you know, what you think should be posted instead of, I don't even know if anybody can post, anybody else can post on behalf of the city, I don't think they can. So you'll have to contact city staff to do that. And then of course, your own personal social media, which gets a little more complicated. This is your personal social media sites expressing personal opinions. I think the one thing to always keep in mind is you do represent the city and, you know, people know that. And you, you can't be posting on things that will come before you on the commission or the council. So you can't say, well, I really hate this project and I'm not going to vote for it even though you haven't, you know, had the public hearing on it or whatnot. So you have to save those, those opinions and the discussion for when you have the meeting and have that at the meeting happen, just so you don't violate any open mean law issues. And then there's a bias issue I'll talk about later related to that. And then it's important to make sure that you let people know that you, that you represent the city. I know some council members have their own separate social media account for, for their city business and then they have their personal account. Sometimes that can be a good practice because then you don't have everybody looking at your, you know, vacation pictures or whatnot. So it's just, you know, what you know about the city and they know you're, that it's clear that you're speaking on behalf of the city and, and in your capacity as a, as a council member or a commission member. So that, that can be one way to, to go around, to, to kind of use that issue. And then if there's a, like a data request, which social media pages are subject to the data practices law, then we would know where to, it's similar to a separate email account, we would know where to find that information. That would be responsive to the request. So it's kind of good practice maybe to have a separate social media account for your city business and then one for your personal business. And then there are some city code requirements for commissioners. And one of them is residency in the city, that should be kind of self-explanatory. And then there are three-year terms and there are attendance requirements. I think they're a little bit different for parks versus planning commission. And then there is a removal requirement. So commissioners are appointed, as you know, by the council. They can also be removed by the council, so that doesn't mean you get to serve out your three-year term. If there becomes an issue with the council, it can remove you. There is a provision in the city code regarding planning commissioners and when they can be removed. And they can be removed for exhibiting behavior disruptive to the good order and efficiency of the planning commission. That's kind of broad.
Doesn't the Parks Commission have that?
I don't know. There must have been an issue with that.
Look in the mirror.
I'm all aware.
And, you know, I mean, I actually have helped a couple of cities remove planning commissioners and, you know, it has to be done by the council and it has to be done in a public meeting and it's not fun. So, so don't get yourself in that position, but, you know. And then the next thing, this one might get you in this position would be when you're evaluating applications. So when you're evaluating applications, that's considered a quasi judicial act. And when you're doing that, you're examining facts and then you're applying a legal standard to the facts and then rendering the decision. So basically, you know, if somebody comes in for a conditional use permit, you're, you know, looking at the facts. You know, does this meet the, you know, does this type of use, is it a conditional use in this zoning district? And then, you know, what are those requirements that they have to meet in order to get the conditional use permit? That's a legal standard. And then if they meet those requirements, then saying, yes, they should get the conditional use permit because they meet all the requirements that are in the code. And this, so quasi judicial decisions include a number of things, not just conditional use permits, but interim use permits, whether to grant a variance and then whether to approve like a preliminary plat or a subdivision. So a lot of land use decisions. And it could also include like liquor licenses, those kind of things that come before, tobacco licenses that come before the council. So before making a quasi judicial decision, the city must provide the public with notice of the proposed action along with an opportunity for the public to be heard. So you have to have a public hearing and I think the planning commission bears the brunt of that most of the time. And the quasi judicial decision must be made by an impartial decision maker. And that's the key, is you want to be impartial when you're having the public hearing and you're listening to the applicant talk about their application and you shouldn't have any predisposed opinions about the, the application at that point. And if you're writing on social media about it and how you hate it and you're organizing people to come to the meeting to speak against it, then it's clear that you're not impartial and you're making a quasi judicial decision. And this came up in a case that I bring up a lot, this is a continental property case in Minneapolis. And in this case, there was a very controversial conditional use permit variances that were needed for a mixed-use housing tower. And the city council denied the applications. And the developer ended up suing the city claiming that its due process rights were violated. And that was basically relying on the contact, conduct of a single council member. And she was going around, kind of organizing people to come and speak against the, the project and mobilizing neighborhood opposition and also talking to her former, her fellow council members about the project and how they shouldn't vote for it. And so the court found that she's taken a position in opposition and she exhibited a closed mind before the council even heard the matter. And then she also adopted an advocacy role in opposition to the proposed project. So in, in that case, they said the city should not have denied the project because of that council member's behavior. So that, that's important to keep in mind that, you know, your, your activity can, you know, cause legal liability for the city. And, you know, it can be by as simple as doing that on social media or actually going, physically going around and asking people to attend the council meeting and speak against it. You know, you really need to avoid advocating a position until all the information is presented at the council or the commission meeting. And, you know, you just need to be neutral and listen to both sides and then make your decision. And, you know, be careful of any ex parte communications, either with the applicant or supporters, opponents. I know these people like to contact you. And, you know, I mean, I think you can hear them out and hear what they have to say, but you shouldn't be saying, oh, yeah, yeah, based on what you're saying, I'm not going to vote for this, you know. I, I think you just have to say, thanks for your information, I'll note it and move on. And just, you know, disclose that when you're at the meeting and say, you know, the applicant called me and they wanted me to know this about the project and I thought you should all know that because they told me about it. So just be, you know, err on the side of disclosure to the entire body. Yes?
So to that point, when an applicant, because this, and this happens when an applicant, whether it's for a CUP, IUP, whether it's for a variance, and they think, well, I'm going to talk to the council before I talk to staff. I'm going to make sure this gets through staff, I'm not going to pay for my variance until I know council approves it. Well, they can't and they shouldn't, but they do. So do, do we as a city inform them certain things to be like, look, you can, but it's not worth your while? Or council has been Or council has been trained, they can listen, but they're not gonna give you an opinion, so it's not worth your time?
Yeah.
Like, 'cause there are instances where they invite us out to say, come out when city staff is here, so you can hear my case when it's not before the chamber.
I mean, I think you can go out there and look at it, or, or collect information on it, if they wanna contact you and tell you about their project, but I don't think you can say, you have my support, you know, just that you have, have the information, and I think you should share it with, at the meeting, you should share it with the other council members and say, you know, they provided me with this information, and it's, you know, this is what it was, and I wanna make sure everybody had it. And, but then, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take a side with them.
Sarah, that's been going on for many, many years. And oftentimes, they would call and say, you know, come out and look at the sites and so on. And we'd just direct, I'd just direct them right back to city staff.
Yeah.
There was nothing that was ever gone from there.
That's fine, you don't need to waste your time on it.
But if somebody's asking for a variance, or they wanna do something, it's okay to go out and look at the properties.
Yes, it is. I mean, it's, sometimes it can help, if you can see it physically. I mean, I know I've had that, where I've driven by just to see what it is that they're talking about.
But you certainly don't commit to anything.
No, and then, that's the hard part, if you're out there, standing there, talking to them, it's gonna be hard to say, well, I didn't say that.
And don't, don't reply off.
Exactly. Yeah, or so, yeah, it can, it can get a little dicey, I think, if you're out there with them. The next subject is ordinance enforcement. And I'd just like to say that city council members and commissioners don't have any authority to force the city's ordinances. And so, if you encounter an ordinance violation, you should report that to the appropriate city staff person. And then, they'll determine if there's been a violation, and whether any enforcement action should be taken by the city. If enforcement action is to be taken, then they'll ensure that it gets taken. And that's important, because, I mean, sometimes, I mean, I get questions even from city staff, where they say, we think there's a violation here, but we're not sure, you know, can you look at it? Here's the code provision we think they're violating, can you take a look at it? And then, we have to kinda do an analysis to figure out if they are, in fact, violating it. And, you know, that's not something you need to be doing, and, you know, usually don't have the expertise to do that anyway, that's city staff and the city attorney trying to figure that out. Otherwise, if you take it upon yourself to try to figure all that out, you could subject the city to liability if it's found that there's not a violation of the ordinance, and the violator suffers damages. We actually had this in another city where, I think it was a city council member that was going around and like, with the building official, and saying that their, their pro, their garages that these people were building were not meeting code, and he was reporting it to their insurance, and, and one of them made a claim against the city for him doing that, and it got to be pretty, pretty dicey. So it's just, you know, that's what city staff is here for, so just, just like anybody else, just report it, and say, I think there might be a violation here, and here's what, here's what I know, and here's the information, can you look into it for me? And I'm sure they'd be happy to look into it and get back to you with what they decide to do about it. And the next one is tips for effective meeting participation. Come to the meeting with a positive attitude. I know these aren't fun, but it's important to kinda have a positive attitude and an open mind. And then, be on time, it doesn't help too, if you're coming in twenty minutes, an hour late. And then, also be prepared for the meeting, read your packet in advance. I always read the packet in advance, and, you know, it can be a lot to read, but it's important to read that ahead of time. There's a lot of important information in that, and then you're not asking questions that have probably already been answered in the packet. And then, think about what's best for the entire city. So you may not like the project, 'cause you don't, you know, let's say it was, you know, the Dairy Queen, and you don't like Dairy Queens, 'cause you had a bad experience there. Well, you know, what do other people think about Dairy Queen? You know, I think they would like that. So you have to think about what's best for the entire city, not just yourself. And then, as we were just talking about, you know, you can visit the location in advance. That can be helpful in certain situations, to see, you know, what's going on with the property, and what it is exactly that they're asking for, and what the layout of it is. But you can't really go on to people's property unless they invite you. So don't go, you know, walking on people's property. As I say, you can go where the Girl Scouts can go. You know, so if you, if you walk up to somebody's door, knock on the door, that's fine, 'cause the Girl Scouts can do that. You can't go into their backyard and start digging around without their permission. So, so kinda keep that in mind when you're, you know, and usually, it's more of a, you contact the applicant, or they contact you and say, do you wanna see this? You can look at it that way. And then, in the meeting, make sure that you're allowing group participation, so make sure you get kind of away in from everybody on the commission or the council, so that everybody participates. And then, just be a good listener, that was a problem back in 2016. It's not really a problem now, but, you know, make sure you're taking other people's opinions into, into account. And then, if you do have questions, this is important, I think, make sure you contact city staff ahead of time, because it's a lot easier to answer the questions ahead of time than at the meeting, if we're having to dig up information last minute, or we have to contact somebody. It just makes more sense to know about that ahead of time, and not be caught off guard. So, and then, also, make sure you contact city staff if you can't attend. As I said, there are remote attendance ways, so, I mean, there might be a way to make it work, if you're willing to put in the time while you're on vacation or whatnot. But it's also for quorum. I mean, I would hate it if, you know, there's a, a big snowstorm, and people come, and we don't have a quorum, and everybody made an effort to get here, and, you know, put their lives in danger, and all drove here, and then find out we don't have a quorum. And then, we find out later that somebody had some event they had to go to, and that's why they're not here, and that's why we don't have a quorum. And if we would've known that, we would've just canceled the meeting. And then, also, just for, you know, public hearings and whatnot, we need to know if we have a quorum, so we need to, we need to schedule all that stuff. So it's important to let people know if you're not gonna be there, and, you know, we can either make a way for you to attend remotely, or just know in advance that we're not gonna have that particular member there, and we may not have a quorum if we don't have a certain So with that, I am ready for any questions you have, it's kind of a lot of information.
What are the thoughts on commission members using a city email versus their own email for business? Just curious.
Not my thoughts, or what their thoughts are?
Their thoughts.
My thoughts?
Your thoughts on that really don't matter, I think.
I know, I know, I'm not paying for it.
It is, but if it's important to the members, you're volunteers, right? And so, I guess my adage and my opinion would be, if that's important to you, to make sure that, you know, I don't want people rooting around in my personal email account for information that I'm volunteering to do for the city, then that's important, to me, anyway. Maybe it's not important to everybody, but I just, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think $100, but I don't like my personal email.
Right.
Yeah.
I think the key is too, is...
Yeah, I mean, we could do it as an option, if that's what you wanna do, right? Just something we budget for.
I think you'd wanna make sure that they're gonna use it. You know, I wouldn't wanna, you know, have this email account I'm not gonna use, and then we pay for it, and then...
Micah, how, you know, Micah?
I'm listening.
All right, I mean, how often do you, do we have emails?
I don't, I don't want one.
No, I, I don't think they, I don't think the volume is there to, to be a challenge.
I understand the premise of it, but I don't, I don't know that it's...
I don't need, I don't need another email.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna check it.
Well, that's the issue, if you're not gonna check it, you know.
I actually, I actually set up one, it was Peter Kessler, Lake Elmo Parks, or something like that, at Gmail, and I just never used it, okay? Because I don't want another email.
All right, just wanna be sensitive to your privacy and what you want, or don't feel you need, certainly if that's something you want.
If you're talking to a city vehicle, you know, I think we could all use one of those. That's a car issue.
I don't know if that hassle'd be worth it.
Right, true, noted.
Put a little tracker on it, and know where you're at all the time, and Tom's going eighty and sixty. Safety issues. So I, I guess if, you know, I'd leave it up to you, if it's not so cool, if you're fine with the way things are, if you think that's something you'd like to talk to, talk to either Adam or Jason, and they can work with Nicole, or whoever Nicole assigns to, to set that up for you, I guess I'll just, I'll leave it to that. Okay?
And I should note, as planning commissioners, Charles and I got multiple data requests.
Oh, really?
Yes.
You guys must've been doing some bad things, huh?
And it was a pain, because it was, now, I had done the same thing, where I created a separate Gmail just for that, but it's still a pain. And it, like, there's pressures, like, you're a volunteer, oh my God, there's data requests, like, like, there's over something, I'm not even gonna comment. But, yeah, we had data requests, multiple, as, as commissioners.
I mean, it was a couple of times, I don't, I don't remember how many times it was, but it's just some, another, something to deal with. You know, maybe you just, like, some people, they just keep everything in one folder and say, oh, here, here's all my stuff that I've had for planning commission or Parks Commission, Any other questions for Ms. Unsala?
I've got a quick question, Sarah. This is back a while, but there was a person who had run the council years and years ago, and their aunt was in LLC, but nobody really knew it, and they were purchasing land here in Lake Elmo for future development type thing. Is how does that, as long as he doesn't find, didn't financially benefit from it, it'd be all right?
Yeah, I mean, that would be the question, I guess, you know.
It's kinda weird.
Yeah, you would have to ask that question to them, to determine if they're, if they have financial interest, but just, you know, a family member, that's probably okay, especially if it's in, on it, I mean, seems pretty far removed, but, um...
Yeah, it did, but like I said, it was just something that came out.
But that's, you know, something we'd wanna look at ahead of time, and not at the meeting.
Is that it? All right, call a point of privilege for, you've been here for hour and a half, get up, stretch your legs, five minutes, we'll come back. Use the restroom if you need to.
Get up and stretch. Jesus, my God.
Any other questions for Ms. Sala?
I've got a quick question there. This is back a while, but there was a person who was on the council years and years ago. And their aunt was in LLC, but nobody really knew it. And they were purchasing land here in Lake Elmo for future development type thing. Is how does that, as long as he doesn't find, didn't financially benefit from it, it'd be all right.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the question, I guess, you know.
It's kind of weird.
Yeah, you would have to ask that question to them to determine if there's a financial interest, but just, you know. A family member, that's probably okay, especially if it's in, on it, I mean. Seems pretty far removed, but, um.
Yeah, it did, but like I said, it was just something that came out.
But that's, you know, something we'd want to look at ahead of time and not at the meeting.
Well, it wasn't.
All right, well, we're back. Thank you, everybody, for taking care of that. Now, we're going to talk about, or have our joint planning commission and city council workshop. Ms. Jensen?
So first, I wanted to start off by reviewing what the planning commission accomplished in 2025. In 2025, the planning commission either completely checked off the list or at least started all items on the work plan. So this is one of the first times I've seen that get done, so that is impressive. I'm not going to go line item by line item, but if there's any questions, we can circle back to it. And looking at 2026, so staff used the same format as 2025. There are some carryover annual items. The items with the blue circles are new for 2026. And so I will go item by item, but we can stop if there's any questions. So the first is processing housekeeping amendments identified in 2025. This is a standard item that's been on every work plan. Next is reviewing short-term rental registration and regulation ordinance. This was started in 2025 and will be carried through 2026. Reviewing the CIP is an annual item. We added preparing for the 2050 comp plan process. So we're in the early planning stages. I expect this to pick up as we near 2029. Provide training to the planning commission. This is an annual item. The next three items are related to city projects or city property. The first is land use applications for the old fire hall and parks building, land use applications, then for the 76 acre park. And land use applications for the 180 acre 3M property. Moving on to the next item is holding the annual, the annual joint planning commission and city council work session, which is being held tonight. Next item is reviewing A U ARs. Their city has a handful of A U ARs that are expiring soon. So reviewing those and determining if those need updates. Continuing our sustainability efforts through Gold Leaf, B3, and Green Steps. And a new item that was recommended by the planning commission, promoting open space developments and wildlife habitat corridors. And I think the last one is cut off, but it's processing land use applications as they're requested by developers or property owners. So here for feedback, if there's any comments or changes to the 2026 plan. Or if there's any other items council or commission would like to discuss since we are at a joint session. And just, this is slated for city council and two, three for final adoption. So I'll open it up to the commission and council.
We're not going to be able to meet on, is that correct?
That is correct. We are looking at alternative date.
There's a Republican caucus, and I guess cities can't meet.
Caucus, I think. Okay. Sometime early February.
Yeah.
I'd like to add a few things. Number one, the city of Lake Elmo has always been historically environmentally friendly and very sensitive to things. That's one of the reasons many people came here, to moved here. And many years ago, supposedly, I, when I was on the council and sitting up there, the Wheeler dealers came and said, we can give you Bloomington. And the resident, we went out to the residents and said, do you want to be like Bloomington? And they said, no. So how can Lake Elmo retain its identity and still its protection of our, and of our sensitive environmental areas that we do have left? We've lost a lot of them, as you well know, through some of the development, but what can we do to sustain it? Because it's Lake Elmo Parks, and that was always a strong thing. And those of you that are relatively new to the area, you might not know that the regional park reserve was going to be a garbage dump. It was going to be a municipal garbage dump for the city of Lake Elmo, not Lake Elmo, the twin cities. And we successfully fought it, fought it. So whenever people think I get really excited about our preserving some of our natural amenities that we do have left. That's one of the reasons why.
That, that, that tends to be part of the comp plan, does it not?
Right, and the comp plan is coming up, and, and Gail Cedarburg is our District 11 council member that we're supposed to be working with, with Met Council. And as I recall, I think they're projecting for 2050, 18,000, like, 800 population total.
Well, the old comp plan, you look at it, and the 18,000 was calculated to be in 2030.
And that was 2030. Now they're pushing it to 2050.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's like 4,000 people different from where we have 5,000 where we are now. So that's 2050, which is, I'll be dead and gone by then, but, but hopefully somebody else will be still fighting. I would like Lake Elmo to retain some kind of its own identity. And, and one of the things that's really bothered me, when I quick saw, when I saw this, you know, process the land for the old fire hall and parks building, that's going to be exciting to work on that one. Process the land use for the 76 acre park, I have a big problem with that when it's a number three on ours and it's a number one on the parks commission. And I, I think there's some issues there. We have the 180 acres that is sitting up by, what is it, ideal? Whatever, whatever, up by target, I guess I'll say. And, and I'm concerned about that because some of the background material I read, which the city provided. You know, some of these venues will bring in, you know, 100 teams a weekend. And I kind of think of that between two environmental parks as being very unsustainable. That's a lot of people. And the cost, too. They're talking 25 million. That's a lot of money. And it would be nice if our city would go to the residents, the taxpayers, and put something on the ballot. I know you discussed it, but I think it was put off for until next year, or this year now, 2026.
Yeah, the process is just starting, so.
Yeah.
There will be a lot of community involvement in, in that, that certainly one of the.
Because I think it's $60,000 plus expenses has been projected for a consultant to come and kind of talk. And to those of us that's kind of had the depression era, that's a lot of money.
Right.
Or something that, when our water system is really worthy, we should be putting our focus, for we have clean, good, fresh drinking water that's safe.
Then we talked about there was community involvement process, and then doing a scientific valid survey to detect what people really want in that recreation area.
Yep. Question for Sophia, for Jason. When it comes to wildlife corridors. I like the concept as well. I'm wondering from a planning standpoint, what does that look like? Because I know we don't necessarily, that's not a required chapter for the 2040 comp plan.
No, wildlife, yeah, wildlife corridors are like what was went between, well, I used to live Tarkin Park and the regional park reserves. That used to be a big wildlife corridor, and then it would go the whole way down, or along the railroad tracks, kind of near where you live. You know, Reed Park and that thing, that area.
So it's not a part of the comp plan directly, but there's parts where in terms of open space and how we zone. What does it look like from a planning standpoint? Because there are ways to help integrate it, but there are also things that, I'm just curious, like, what, what does staff see for how this looks? Is it something where it's a code update, where it's something that's part of the 2050 plan? Is it something for certain areas to make sure that this, this is an opportunity that exists in this part of town? So that means maybe a different zoning. Like, what does that look like?
You don't have an idea.
Jason, you want to?
Yeah, I mean, so what we talked about is with open space developments, being able to leave, you know, 50% open space for these corridors. If it was a bigger plan and understanding how this would affect the entire city, that's something we want to look at through the comp plan. And making sure, because we have this, like, designation, I think it's like public parks.
Public semi-public PSP.
Yeah, so that, that is there in parts of the code, so we'd have to be really evaluating, like, where they're necessary or useful. And then seeing if it's a combination of open space developments or just setting aside land to be public.
I believe there's a map that was generated by the Washington Conservation District that shows the wildlife corridors right now.
Right.
I feel like it's somewhat like the, the trail system. It needs to be tied and strung together, and so they can move from one area of the city through, through the city. Like, right now, if you look at where the, the lakes are, the Tri Lakes, and how they kind of wind down. And then they've, you've got the open space in between there that gets to Sunfish Lake, and then you cross over the road and you get on into the park preserve. And they go on down to, to the river or wherever they're going from there, but. Where did that map come from?
Washington County Soil and Conservation, there's, there's just a group of people there that would just love to help come out and give talks or talk to people. And, and that's where I got the, that map originally, the, the, the wildlife corridors. And that's what kind of, kind of hit me the other, well, it was last year. I said, hey, this is a good idea. And it's better to incorporate something like that now rather than try to retrofit something. So perhaps we could, if you want me to contact Soil and Water Conservation again and get the map, or you can probably pull it up on the computer.
That's something staff can do, but yes.
But we have such.
My curiosity then is, because we are starting to come up with a 2050 plan.
Yes, in 2026.
We legally have to have zoning that can accommodate a certain population, so.
4,000 more.
Correct. So I, I fully get it, I, but it's, it's going to have to be balancing act. Because that's why I'm curious from a process standpoint, what the, because it's obviously, there's going to be certain areas where it's not possible, and if there are certain areas where it is.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I, so I.
What we're counting for as well, like, we have conservation easements in town, so those could qualify for corridors. And if we can find a way to maybe engage the community to participate in that. I know that my neighbor right now is considering a conservation easement. It's a big piece of property. I'm willing to throw some of my property in. My two neighbors already have it, so there's already the start to a corridor.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I think the other thing on this list that I just wanted to just see if we could just talk about a little bit more are the short-term rentals. We have the, the bed and breakfast right now that are owner occupied, and, and that's fine, but the, the statistics out there of the ones that we have. Eight of them, of the 11, are not registered. Some of them are owner occupied, some of them are not. So before, I feel like before we can move forward and take on short-term rentals anywhere, we should manage the 11 that we currently have. They either need to be licensed or told that they can no longer exist.
Agree. I agree with that.
Thank you so much.
We've gotten emails from the VRBO people, or at least I did, out of my city council email, about importance of them, and they want to come and talk to us. And, you know, I think that's a local decision, do we want to allow these or not first? If we decide that we think short-term rentals are appropriate in certain districts or whatever, then we might be, I might be able to listen to something else. First, we have to make that decision because they're currently not.
We just, I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing, because the, the bed and breakfast right now is an owner occupant only.
Yep.
And they, they own the property, they're homesteaded, and so whether they're in the house at the same time as the renters, I don't think that really matters, as long as they're the, the homestead. The short-term rentals are investor owned, and the last three that are, and I don't think any of them are registered, that were purchased and are currently being used. Are one in 2023 and two in 2024, but they were purchased just for short-term rentals. And so they're not following city code, and so I think we need to be able to do ordinance enforcement first. Before we can take on something even bigger that's, and do we want investors owning our homes? I mean, we have a housing shortage, so, I mean, I'd rather see a, a family purchase that home than to have an outside investor that's. With a revolving door of people coming through. And as far as property rights go, I think we should take into consideration more the citizens and what their property rights are. That are next to the house that an investor is looking at purchasing.
I might be wrong, but I don't think we've received any complaints or ordinance checks on any of these properties. That would, that would necessitate a, a, a check on that and, and enforcement of the code, really. But to, to date, my knowledge is that has not happened.
Kind of confused, I, a short-term rental wouldn't necessarily have to be investor owned. I mean, it could be a, a family that has a property that they rent out, and it could be long-term or it could be short-term, but it could certainly be.
Yep. It wouldn't. It's, it's not their primary residence then, though.
It could be.
It's just not.
Then they're, then they're, then they're bed and breakfast.
We don't have a, we don't have a code or ordinance for that right now, is what I think you're getting at. We do have one for just bed and breakfast.
And we also have hotels, motels, and inns that are in our code that are considered short-term rentals. They're, they're the same type of transient consumers that are using those spaces. So I, I guess I just feel like, I don't think it's fair to open it up to the, bring in short-term rentals into existing neighborhoods. Now HOA might not, not allow it, so those people are taken care of, but what about the people in the city that, that aren't in an HOA? Then, then if we're going to do a COP, a CUP for those, then every time one of those come up, the homeowners have to go down to the city. And take their time and coordinate and go through a lot of work to try to prevent that from moving in next door to them.
And if I recall, we were, we did meet on this, was that November, December?
Correct. City council had a workshop in November, planning commission discussed it in December.
And so last was the community development group was doing some research and getting some more information together on that topic.
I do think coming to a decision about it would be a good thing for 2026. Let's decide what, you know, if we're, if we're going to allow them under what conditions, and if we're not. But whatever, we should have something in our code that addresses them either legal, illegal, or.
Would any of you anticipate doing long-term rental licensing, which Lake Elmo doesn't do now? Is that something I would concern?
I would highly, my initial thought is the cost for licensing and for inspections. It was my gut, like, because right now, the reason why there are instances that are out of compliance is we have limited staff and we operate based upon complaints. No one has substantiated a complaint to staff to go investigate. If, if that occurred, they would. In the case of long-term, at least the feedback I've heard from other cities is if you do that, beware, because your, the cost for staff is massive. And you're hiring a massive amount of FTEs, and there might, might be a value gained for Woodbury or Stillwater. I don't know if there's a, a value gain for us, but at least that's where I, I stay.
So I guess I, I'm just, I'm confused as to whether long-term, long-term rental isn't allowed by ordinance. So is that, should there be complaints by, for people renting their house long-term?
I don't think a long-term rental is as big of a problem, because the neighbors know who's living there. They know that that person has a lease for a month, a year.
Long-term rental is protected by fair housing, so anything over 30 days, you can't discriminate, so.
Sure, but you could require a license for.
You could.
You could. Yep. When is the timeline for the next discussions and processing of any recommendations?
It could be fairly soon. We just have to look at the schedule. One of the questions that we're going to ask is just, or given the county, because the county permits bed and breakfast also. So could this all be done through the county? And then we talked about what happens if you have people that are in violation or of the noise ordinance that we discussed, like, who enforces that? You know, because it's, can be difficult if it's at night during the weekend, so we're going to talk to them and just see.
Eight of the 11 that we currently have in town are not.
Because it's can be difficult if it's at night during the weekend, so we're gonna talk to them and just see.
Eight of the eleven that we currently have in town are not registered, they're not in compliance, so.
Eight of eleven, what?
Of the people that are calling them, that are on Airbnb are verbal as a short term rental.
So three of them are in compliance?
There's three of them that are.
How are they in compliance?
Let me get you the exact, seven are registered. Four are not registered, five of the seven are non-homesteaded, three of the four are non-homesteaded, so eight of them are non-homestead, so they're not, they're not.
Who are they registered with?
Bed and breakfast, with the city, there's only seven of them that are of the eleven.
So some are registered as bed and breakfast, and then they will place those on Airbnb, so they could be.
But they're not all owner occupied, so they're not in compliance with the form that they signed. They're saying they're owner occupant and they're really not.
Gotcha.
I mean, I, it's really easy to see when you go out and look at the public record. You can look them up, you can look up their homestead status, you can look at when they purchased it. Are necessary, and I don't think we should have them everywhere in town. If if you want them, put them in a new new development somewhere where the neighbors are expecting it versus somebody to be surprised by them moving in next door. I mean, I don't have kids, but if I had kids, I for sure wouldn't want one of these next to my house. It's kind of like the pickleball guy, he's got the pickleball court now and his kids and trying to figure out how to solve that problem.
Well, the thing is, you know, I, that we should discuss in 2026.
Which is what this is saying.
That is the plan.
It's not a decision that has to be made, it's saying we need to figure it out in 2026.
Correct.
Dial up, but I think that's, it's obviously, it needs to be more discussion, but.
Okay.
All right, it'll be on city council consent sometime early February.
Got nothing going on in February fourteenth, I mean, do we have a meeting then? No?
Maybe we should just be thankful that ICE hasn't found out about those eight.
I don't think any of them are non-US citizens, but I can look at my list.
I just meant as a place to stay.
Oh, yeah, they need a place to stay.
Parks, the one that we can't remove people from.
Just to quickly go over the parks, 2026 Parks Commission work plan. A couple of years ago, we actually worked on the priority level, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit, where we went hand in hand with the planning commission. So things did kind of correlate with one another. So as for the parks, one of our items on for 2026 is to review the Washington County Central Greenway Trail Plan and other county CIP projects near Lake Elmo. That's a, that's just in general to bring more insight to our Parks Commission of, you know, how we can look further down the road of our current projects, projects they have in line and really align some of our our trail projects as that goes forward. Our second one is review future neighborhood playground replacements and schedule of priority. This actually come from a prior workshop that the council and Parks Commission had together. And just in general of looking at different amenities for some of these neighborhood parks and really prioritizing what playgrounds need to be replaced and maybe eliminating some of those throughout our system, so we're not on this continuous twenty-six year replacement policy over the years. Our third item is pave the dog park and parking trails, or sorry, the dog park parking lot and trails in that area. It's just a small portion of that trail, just the entrance of of the the delching area. I'll work directly with our our engineering department with that, the, as far as the status and timing of that will come with our construction projects. They'll work with the the contractor to apply that throughout the season, so we're probably looking at mid summer to late to late summer for that project. Court resurfacing in Demachville, Carriage and Tablin, we do have three basketball courts in those areas. Projects with that is to just kind of protect our current investments of our amenities and just increase our our, you know, the longevity of those of those court services. So you'll see kind of at our Demachville, that's really starting to deteriorate a little bit, so if we can get on top of those things just to to help help the longevity of those, to keep our assets up. Select a location and install a park pavilion, so a couple of years ago, we did put in our Parks Master Plan, or CIP, I should say, is to install five pavilions throughout the our parks, and the biggest part of that was to just bring some additional shade to our parks. I think we were having some requests from our citizens just to have a place to sit, place for maybe parents to watch their kid play on the playground and things like that. So we did put in our CIP, we'll work on locations throughout those throughout this year, where we'd like to prioritize where to place those, but also select where that first one might go and what those pavilions will look like in the in the years to come. Ridge Park Playground Replacement, again, some of these things will come before this, I think are not only our priorities at our playground, but also our selection of where these are gonna be. So Ridge Park, we have discussed already some of the the planning of that, but this one could be in that realm of do we do we keep or do we continue on with that one? So so probably later on, we're probably looking at late 2026 with that one. Again, that also goes right in line with our Tablin Park Playground Replacement, after that priority list, we'll get a better idea where that lines up in a replacement policy, or in a replacement for 2026. Review and mitigate the pickleball noises at Pebble Park. I did bring this up with our Parks Commission in our December meeting, and they did, there's a couple of members that are here tonight that would like to talk a little bit more, maybe get some other information from the city council in regards to that. It is pretty costly in order to do two sides of that, but we do want to discuss that if if people are willing to, so. Develop Alliance Park Master Plan, this was an idea that was brought up again late fall last year. This idea was generated not only from our 2024 Parks Master Plan, but also with some implementations we plan to do at that park with our concession stand, with our pickleball courts, ice arena, our parking lots. How do we generate that into, what's the future of that, what does that really look like? With our updates to our playground this year, what's the future of that park from, you know, in possibly not 2050 comp plan, right? So as we look ahead, where does that baseball field lie, what are what are those other amenities applied to that park? So we are looking at a Parks Master, a small Lions Park Master Plan for that. One thing that was added by the Parks Commission at our November meeting was to review the park use policy. We did review that last year and updated it from not being looked at for probably about five years, so we did review that. They'd like to come back and just kind of maybe put that on the agenda every year just to review that, update that, see what's working, see what's not working and keep that updated. Under our maintenance side, just our continuous park needs assessment, reviewing those on a yearly basis, what's needed, what's being asked by our our citizens to apply to our parks. Asphalt trailer maintenance, we do do inspections, including crack filling and additional inspections as far as with our engineering department to fulfill our crack filling, or sorry, our crack filling and seal coating. Our staff does do playground and park inspections on a weekly basis and monthly basis as far as playgrounds. And our park trail winter maintenance, that was something that's been brought up a couple of times in the city council, but also through our Parks Commission, where does that lie? You know, how does public works get involved, the costs and effectiveness of that? Additional park incentives, again, tonight, we'll hold our Parks Commission and City Council Workshop. Plan for a multi-sport complex and park land use, this came up late last fall, November, December, again. Parks Commission really wants to be involved with that, I think one of their comments was is that they possibly weren't being, had the information up at hand, so, you know, in regards to that, they just want to make sure that someone's at the table with conversations with that. So that's why they put that as a priority one versus separate from the planning commission being out of three. So they just want to make sure that, you know, those things are being brought back from, those ideas are being presented as well. Park tree planting has always been on our 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 work plan, just to implement trees throughout our park system, continue that shade structure that's there, but also just with our projects when we are removing trees to, just to make sure that we're replanting them as well. Oversee the efforts of the buckthorn removal at Sally Manzera Center, that's kind of been ongoing, not only with their grant process, but also as with public work staff. It's just to continue to keep an update with the Parks Commission of their efforts, some of the things that they're doing and any changes that they do as well. Adding Shilkins Park to the ski grant application, that's just a a thing that we would add those 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 additional footage of those miles to the grant application and groom those in the winter months. Another thing added by the Parks Commission at our last meeting was park invasive species identification and plan. This was actually put in our 2024 Parks Master Plan, it's just a better a better idea of what invasive species are in the community, but this is kind of getting down that area, starting to identify it, have a plan to attack it and how we can prevent the spread of any invasive species within our community. And finally, on finances, just continue to provide the capital improvement plan, getting getting their input on that and providing budget updates as needed to the to the commission. With that, I'll open that up if there's any other comments or changes that we'd like to see in the 2026 plan.
Question for the Lions Park Master Plan, being that funding was already appropriated for the playground replacement, how does that fit in timeline wise? Is that playground something where if a year from now, two years from now, needs to be moved twenty feet or changed ninety degrees? Because the new master plan says it needs to be over there instead. I assume playground, that can happen with playgrounds, correct?
So it'll probably be a little bit difficult to just pick them up and move them, but are they movable, are they tear down removable, yes they are.
All right.
Yeah.
So.
One of the.
Oh, sorry.
Just one of the sequencing things is the new playground is gonna use the existing cement border around it, and so there are infrastructure elements that are, were advantageous to keep it where it is, and so it's, it's not totally random that like that piece we felt comfortable moving forward with.
Does that include the concessions building and the restrooms and things like that?
It would, yep.
Okay.
I mentioned there's a conversation we had with the pickleball noise mitigation.
Yes.
Well, there aren't too many houses close to it, to the pickleball that's in Lions Park, and I'm I'm up there almost every day during the summer.
We have gotten feedback that there's problems in Lions too.
There has.
The the primary suspect has been Pebble Park.
Interesting.
I think some of the discussion was, do we make any changes to Pebble, knowing, not understanding what might happen or not happen with a sports complex? And there's been residents that have commented, we'll move all of our pickleball courts to that sports complex and take them out of neighborhood parks. Again, not saying that we would do that, but we have to figure out, again, the sequencing, so we don't spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on sound barriers and two years later, it's gone. And that could still happen, but just trying to figure out kind of, again, timeline and and what may or may not happen, so we're making an appropriate decision and not a short sight. Right, and a responsible one and not being short sighted and trying to address the problem currently, but also then long term.
And my initial thought is with the sports complex, any potential asset put there, whether it's the centralized playground that we've discussed, changing location of pickleball, it's four, five, six, seven years out for that. So I I, and given the the very strong feedback, especially at Pebble for for pickleball, I mean, I mean, my, and it's a, that's a very fair question, and I I'm glad it was brought up. My my two cents would be sound mitigation at this point, but my two cents is also that we put a a hold on any new pickleball throughout the city.
Moratorium.
Like, that's just, because I don't see, that's my, and there's a reason for it, but yes, I I think we focus on what we have and the sound mitigation, but that that's my two cents, might not be right, might be wrong, but.
So Adam, if I may ask, I don't remember, I know this is, what was the cost to resurface, like, I know we did both Tablin and Pebble at the same time, but I'm not asking for the exact number, but ballpark, what was that resurfacing?
So to do them both, that was about half million dollars.
Right, you know, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per park invested. Anything that gets built somewhere else that probably has more distance to it is is probably a number of years out. I would think that, given the the noise in particularly, I don't I don't know that I've heard anything from Tablin Park, maybe somebody has, but Pebble Park, there is a a house that's right by there and, you know, I think tennis was okay, it's a different sound, but then there's even some residences that are to the northeast just a titch and and they 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 got fairly vocal, if you watch that council meeting, I think it's worth, even if you invest it and you put something on those fences to try and deaden the sound, if that has to be, you know, let's say the courts get repurposed, they go back to tennis or whatever, some that's a new game that's not as loud, call it whatever you want, hibbity dibbity ball or whatever, right?
Keated head.
Yeah, so, I mean, those those sound barriers, I think can be removed and put somewhere else and be used, so I don't think it's a dead investment. Maybe I'm wrong, but I sure.
Couple of things, one, you were talking about when we started presenting this, they're talking all four sides, we had public there, all four sides, and they even were proposing putting something on top, still not happy with this, and there was feedback from the group, there was only two people there, so it's not a lot of people, that they would prefer tax money be spent on the centralized location than on the sound mitigation. So these are the people that are saying, and the other thing is to pick apart the complaints about the sound, it's a lot of it is the people because of the increased use of the facility. Loud noises, late playing.
Yeah.
Profanity, the sound of the pickleball, I think was mentioned in the big meeting about once or twice. But when they talk about it, when they take about the sound, loud sound of pickleball, it's all of that.
Okay.
Okay.
It's interesting, so the feedback at the council meeting was not that at all.
Yeah, I don't know that I would, I think from my perspective, there was certainly discussion about profanity and yelling, but I I do believe that the ping of the ball is central to this. I I, I mean, that's what we heard in council.
Yeah, just tell me what we heard, my opinion.
When was that, when was the pickleball put in that park?
Two years ago.
Could it just be removed, could the times be shortened, could the days of the week be?
We did, we did that.
All of that, okay.
Well, we didn't remove.
We didn't remove it.
But it's a significant investment on the city's part to do that.
There's obviously demand, people want to.
Been alluded to a little bit, but part discussion with our new park, sports complex, is would there be an opportunity to put them there where it'd be away from, we in the back corner, be away from people and noise would be, you know, such an a problem, and then repurpose the current ones for tennis or something less objectionable. I don't know that, but you mean, it would be a good discussion to have, and we could determine what makes the most sense, both economically and from keeping everybody happy. Because of pickleball, people want to have pickleball courts, and we gave it to them, courage enough to play, we didn't anticipate the noise problem that would come with it. And so recognize that, you know, we look for alternatives and we're doing this big complex development, may not fit in there. But in the worst case, we find out it doesn't fit with everything else that needs to go there, and we have to plan something different.
Maybe down by the railroad tracks on the Hundred and Eighty Acres, that'd be a spot for it.
Up by the public works.
Right behind the Target, where all the lights and all the activity is.
I don't think, when you look at the various noise mitigation products they have, they don't get rid of the noise, it still goes up, it's still there. And I think it's a lot of money with a lot, not, the results aren't.
Well, you guys can make that determination, I'm agree, that's fine.
And that's why we sent it back to staff, because we really did not have. And that's why we sent it back to staff, because we really did not have a lot of information. They had, well, it kind of works over here, and well, this, we could try this, so that's what we want to do, but we want to go through that process.
I understand, it's much like a noise wall along the highway, the house right next to the highway gets used, the house is 400 yards, 400 feet deep, the sound waves go over and come down, so, understood.
I think one thing that we were, you know, we thought needed further discussion, too, is it's not just talking about putting up sound mitigation blankets or something like that, the actual, since that's a really heavy weight, the entire infrastructure of the courts need to be upgraded with deeper, like, deeper footings for the fences and things like that, so it's, there's both a permanent aspect as well as this more consumable type aspect.
Got it.
It catches the wind and.
Thank you.
The loadings more.
Maybe the Lions should change from review and mitigate pickleball noise at Pebble Park to review pickleball courts for the long term.
Definitely want to support physical activity. People are here for recreation.
This is completely out of left field, but technically, the city also has an agreement with the school district for the whole northeast corner of Oldland Middle School, all the way on 10th and Manning, and once the septic is removed from there, there's a large flat area, but that's a whole other story.
How many acres?
Hundreds. It is, sorry, it is.
Thousand?
No, it's like in the 10 to 15 range.
Two acres.
But their, their courts are, have tennis nets.
To the north of that, that, all the land that has trees and is flat.
You mean adding new ones up.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a completely out of left field, but.
That's nice.
Someone sent me a map of that.
Try to find something that's compatible.
I think the conversation came from, is like initially when we did start talking about pickleball and we approved the courts at the half million dollars, is that City Council did direct the city administration at that time to set aside $75,000 for sound mitigation, and so that's why that conversation is coming back, and what we are finding is that, yeah, we do have to replace the fence there because the fence will not hold the weight of our product. And then the, then we did have a conversation of the neighbors on the backside of it saying, well, you're going to block the sound from him, but you're not going to block the sound from me, right? So now, now it really made the commission start to think, because like, well now, now we're going to quadruple the price by doing all the rest.
I didn't really hear that there were complaints to the west of the court, it was mostly from the east.
Well, this is a unified problem, is we don't, we went out ahead of all this when we did it and surveyed people, and we got very little feedback.
Right.
Then when it happens, everybody's got feedback, but then the feedback is kind of all over the place.
Right.
I think that's why just setting the pickleball, future pickleball courts in Lake Elmo is, would be the thing to do, and as long as we do this complex, we have an opportunity to maybe move them, it may not work, but if that doesn't work, well, maybe it's the school, you know, but I think long term, we're not going to get away from the complaints that we currently have, I don't believe the sound curtains are going to solve it either.
No.
I think it'll, it'll make it softer, but it's not going to do away with it.
Well, I think it'll change the problem, right? Like, now you have problems about, oh, there's black fence on everything, we can't see what's happening inside the courts, it's only a little quieter, it's.
I just think finding a long-term solution to pickleball courts is where we should put our energy in, and once we determine what the best long-term solution is, we can look at how do we, you know, how do we accomplish it financially. I think right next to Jeff Holzhouse would be a perfect place for.
Airbnb on the other side.
Airbnb on the other side, yes.
There's a, there's a, there's a long-term rental.
Sorry, you're out of here.
Nobody remembers what those were. Oh, yeah, lawjards.
Yeah, I think we have kind of established with our, with the master plan, that none should be more than six, or less than 600 feet, which isn't something unfortunately that existed at the time we made the decisions, but I think that gives us some pretty solid framework going forward as a, and it eliminates basically every park, would you say, Adam?
Yeah, it does restrict a lot of our parks.
You know, Jason, with the 180, the very high level rough sketch that came to us, because it had some housing to the north, and we had the discussion about what's better for tax capacity and also for the cost that comes with new residents, none of the plans inherently had any park dedication, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
There was trail access to go elsewhere, but we never focused on a park dedication at, and it's so high level anyways, that's not usually a part of it, but they didn't even include it.
It was open space, so that's what they considered, for open space buffers, but not appropriate space.
Open space buffer for the neighborhood to the, kind of north and east.
And it stinks because the places where you would want to put it, where it's noisier along the road, and those are the most valuable spots for commercial.
Correct.
And the spots where you would, that's our least valuable, are the ones that are closest to homes.
Railroad tracks. We had a whole strip of them.
We do, we do.
We have 180 acres, we own, city should keep that, not sell it all, I don't think we should be selling all that property off, only going to go up in value, but some of it could be used for pickleball, sports complex, all kinds of things. I thought the YMCA would be up great up there.
Let me see his insight.
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to ask our, our Parks Commission to consider a pavilion in Lions Park for sure, this is one of the first ones, please, at least consider that. I mean, they did put the big ball field in there, and I think that was like 100,000 or whatever, and people are there with little kids, I mean, there are people there in the summertime always with, you know, just taking their babies over and going, sitting there and watching their other kids play, and we used to have quite a few trees there, and they got taken out, and they did replace a few, and they're, they're surviving, but I think a pavilion would be nice, and one pavilion that I always liked was the one over by Baytown Township, if anybody ever goes that direction past the, the fairgrounds, they have a nice, a nice one there, it's just kind of, I looked at it and it can't be, you know, that much, but it's, it's more than adequate, I would think, something to at least look at. And number two, DRCity does take donation for trees, do they still do that or not? Okay, all right. I will think of you in Arbor Day, our DAR group always, we've been putting them out in, at, at Sunfish Lake the last five or so years, but maybe there's somewhere else in the city we could donate one this year. I'll contact you.
Yeah, leftover trees from our Arbor Day event, remember they go on Sunfish.
Yeah, we're talking big trees, yeah, real trees, not twigs. What else was there?
Thank you, is there more discussion that the Parks?
Just one more thing, this, this can't.
Not going on their plan?
Yeah, the Washington County Soil and Water Conservation is another good area for our Parks Commission to get in touch with or at least involved with on that invasive species identification and so on. I mean, they are a wealth of information if you just tap into them, and they're more than pleased to come out and help people.
Thanks for that. Were there other things that the Parks Commission wanted to bring up that's in the plan?
I'll bring it up, the elimination of playground equipment, so we're going to take that on this year.
In, in what context?
It's in the plan right now, but we have, how many playground sets?
Oh, 14?
14, and they were neglected for years, and then all of a sudden, we have decided to come and start replacing those because they run to the end of the life, which, there's a lot there, we have put in a lot of playground equipment, so we are going to do an assessment of some sort, and we're going to talk about it tomorrow night, about how it's going to happen.
Okay, all right.
Until it's in your neighborhood, in your playground that your kids played on for the last 20 years.
We don't have any.
Well, maybe we need to add another.
That's what I was thinking, in the pickleball court.
There's no land left. We have a tot lot that's owned by our HOA in the Royal, that's it.
Just put it in the comments area right behind Councilmember Dragons, it's just house, he'd like that.
So noted.
I did read through that 2024 Parks Plan, and one of the things that I saw in there that came up a lot about the parks is the ugly porta potties that are sitting in them. I don't know if you guys have that on your plan to address.
So in the, in the Public Works budget this year is to create like shade, not shade, but orders around them, we are test plotting that this year on two of them, so we'll, we'll create like a cement pad and then a screen around it, which I think like a cedar fence.
We still get to use a porta potty.
Just a.
Either that or nothing.
Yeah.
Are they large enough that people can go in with their children together and change a diaper, or, I mean, are they the big ones?
Most of them are all single, and you're, but in your.
Should think about that, maybe if you're going to do it a bigger.
In our ADA parks, we do have ADA.
Okay. That was another thing.
And I think we'll have to redo our porta potty policy, right? Didn't we develop a porta potty?
A porta potty.
And they shall not stink.
Well, everybody, though, part of it was every park in every neighborhood wants a porta potty.
Yeah, we don't want one in ours.
Tell them to go home.
Firefly's good.
Pick a ball court for you.
That's fine, apparently it was supposed to be, with the developer, it was supposed to be a splash pad, and then he turned it over to the city, but that was before I moved in, so.
Development switch.
Both the splash pad.
Initially, with the development, talking to our neighbors who bought homes when it was all being laid out, right back here, yeah, Firefly Park was supposed to be a splash pad, when the developer laid it all out.
Don't try to walk there, there's no cars.
We covered all the items?
No, no, we have one last one, so last month, at our workshop, we discussed if the council wanted to develop some legislative policies that we can talk to our representatives about, council decided to focus on Lake Elmo in specific, so we have created a document to aid in our meetings with our representatives, we do have a meeting with Commissioner Johnson this Friday, and then our Representative Seberger next week, so in the online agenda was a draft legislative policies document that gives a summary of each of the topics that council wanted, and then we were trying to put what our ask was of our legislators in there, so we're looking for some feedback on this draft document that we could edit, and it's, again, it's just a handout, so we have something for when we meet with them this week and next week.
Did you want feedback now?
Yeah, or, or prior to Friday.
Yeah, because I haven't reviewed it.
I like it, it aligns with what the discussion was, doesn't matter the order, because technically, they're all of our priorities, right? But the first one they read is the one that's probably going to get the most discussion during a one-hour meeting, correct?
Good point.
And I know how much Charles talks, so with that being the case, I mean, to me, the White Bear Lake language is the first one.
Clark will be in attendance as well.
Okay, so we're going to need three hours, so.
We have one hour.
But to me, that, that is far and away the number one, and then every, everything else is a funding issue, everything else is long-term funding for PFAS, funding on roads, funding on roads, but the White Bear Lake one is the hardest one, but it's the thing that affects everything. And tell Clark he has 10 minutes.
You have 10 minutes.
No, I need 20, that's why he gets 10.
You get 10.
We will reorder them.
Here I go, that would cut it to five.
I'm, I didn't want, I didn't want to come heavy-handed on it.
It's your job.
Yes, I think it, it looks awesome, it is efficient, it is to the point, it's easily understandable, it's plain language, it's straightforward, and it's something they can take to their LA, who then can talk to the committee chairs, so I, I like it.
If you do want to look at it after this, we can, you know, do edits up until Friday as well, so.
I don't know if this would be a place, but I'm concerned about having pedestrian crosswalks out here and on, I don't know what you would call it now, Highway 14.
Yeah.
I've never brought that up.
Well, we've, we've brought that up with Washington County staff, right, because they're both Washington County roadways, and simply put, there's no, there's not a willingness on their part to put something like that in on their county roads.
Until someone gets killed.
Even then, it would depend on what kind of traffic they've got, movements they have, and what the accident scene, if it were to happen, was, that's coming from the traffic engineer, Joe Gustafson, so.
I've been biking on 17 here, and nearly been here for people crossing in front of the volleyball place, not looking, you know.
And they're not looking, yep.
And I've been both in the street and the, you know, on the, meet in the.
Shoulder.
Side, shoulder and on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Tom, did you want to attend that meeting on Friday and talk about crosswalks?
No, I'm, I've.
You've said your piece?
Yeah, I have said my piece multiple times and had direct emails with Joe Gustafson back and forth, along with an outside group of citizens that wanted push for crosswalks.
You see somebody, you look, North Star probably going over to coffee on Saturday morning, buggies and kids on bikes.
You can't get, there's no way to cross.
Is it, is it a possibility to put a pedestrian bridge over, over?
For about $5 million.
Well, I mean, I just, who knows, I mean, I don't know where the money would come from, but just, is it even a possibility?
What's the timeline, Jason, for when the county is doing 14 through there?
That's a long time.
It's still, it's in their CIP, but I mean, it still could be four or five years.
It's out there, ways, along, along with Manning and, and.
With a trail.
Yeah, 14 and, and 17 as it comes into 14.
They asked, though, when a project comes in for plating, if we could have right-of-way dedicated to look at expanding that section, right across from Lake Elmo Avenue?
Because Pat, you are not alone, that topic is, I, I, I can speak for council.
Speeding?
That is something that infuriates me as well, it probably might infuriate Matt, I don't know, but.
It does, and it's something we hear all the time.
And it.
It's frustrating because we want to do something, but.
I, I think the next step, when the county does do 14, because they're, they're starting to talk about where the gateway corridor goes, does it go on the north side or the south side, other than that decision point, I don't know what other leverage there is for getting that crosswalk in, and that, again, that still might be, could be a decade?
I don't know about that, but.
Yeah, because what exists in the West.
Having a painting party is what we do.
Maybe a midnight painting.
I mean, literally, other than pounding on the commissioner's doors, I mean, we have a commissioner, she's responsive.
Yeah.
Like, that's the other alternative, if, if, if the civil servants, who do their job based upon the data, like, that is their job, but they, they all answer to a commission, we can go that route, too.
Do we have a trail that's going along that new development, along 17 on the west side?
It goes all the way down the corner.
Just to the corner.
It just goes to the corner, right?
North Star? Yeah. It goes to the corner.
Doesn't even run all the way to.
But it starts at 39th, right?
I believe so, and then it's supposed to go east and west eventually.
39th, right.
So then to the corner, and then the signal light there at Stillwater Boulevard can be utilized, right?
I believe so, yeah. Where does that get you?
Well, if you come down here, then you can go, if you go down the trail.
Yeah.
You come to here, at least you have a crosswalk, and then there's another trail that goes into the old village from this parking lot.
Yeah, I guess you're right, yeah.
What about the old school?
I mean, really.
It takes your, of course, but there's no way on this side.
Yeah, no, there's, no, that doesn't solve the north-south.
The wildflower village preserve, the old neck of the woods, there's no way to get to the old village.
Right.
I mean, should we just pursue a different route of going through our electeds instead at the county level? Because the efforts have been made, I, I know for a fact, the mayor has pressed on this many times, I know others have.
Yeah.
May we go through the elected route to see what pressure we can get on?
See if we can put 50 people at a county board meeting demanding a crosswalk.
Yeah, because.
I'll show up.
Rally, rally, I'll go out and rally people.
Get enough people. Get enough people. And if you don't get an answer the first time, you show up the second time.
Because because it is a valid concern. It is brought up by many.
If if Fury gets redeveloped and that site does, then you at least have the opportunity to force a hand or a requirement to have a sidewalk to bring you to the intersection.
One, one thing that is a possibility, I've worked in this field a little bit, when I was looking at the map, pedestrian bridge probably not happen, but I have had opportunities where we put in pedestrian tunnels. To get people to the other side, so. Because you don't need as much right of way, it doesn't take as much space, you're using infrastructure there. If you're doing it as as the construction's happening.
Can there be a porta potty in it?
For feeding down there, right? Alright. That covered, Nicole?
That's it.
Alright, I'm going to adjourn this evening's meeting, I want to thank you all for your time this evening and good conversation. Have a nice night.